Morning, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Who knows? If I say Merry Christmas, you know I'm in trouble, alright? Uh, today is the January 28th Board of Commissioners meeting, our night meeting, and we're really blessed to have Father Darren Roan from the St. James Episcopal Church to lead us on our invocation. And our pleasure to lead us is by Officer Morgan from Cobb County Precinct 1. So those who are willing to enable, please stand.
Let us pray. Almighty God, who hast given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly beseech thee that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful of thy favor and glad to do thy will. Bless our land with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people, the multitudes brought hither out of many kindreds and tongues. Indue with the spirit of wisdom those to whom, in thy name, we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace at home, and that through obedience to thy law, we may show forth thy praise among the nations of the earth. Most especially, we pray for this board of commissioners, that thou would send down upon them the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. In the time of prosperity, fill all our hearts with thankfulness, and in the day of trouble, suffer not our trust in need of fail. All which we ask through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in whose full liberty just as well.
Okay, just an admin note here for those who are standing along the side there. You know, we have a spillover room, so if you want to stand there, that's fine. Um, but there is some extra room in the, uh, in the next room right off the main hallway there. And I absolutely guarantee you that if you want to speak tonight, you will be heard, alright? We will, we'll make sure that we run through to make sure everybody has a chance to make their comment at the appropriate time, so. Just trying to make you comfortable. Uh, we have, uh, another presentations tonight. The first one's with Commissioner Burl and Cupid to present certificates of recognition to Mountain View Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. If I could have the principals, assistant principals, parents, kids, um, everybody here representing Mountain View Elementary and Clay Elementary, and also our school board member David Banks, and our state rep, um, Eric is here with us too. Eric Allen. I wanted to say Hill, and I was like, that's not right. I'm so sorry. So, we are here tonight to recognize Mountain View Elementary and Clay Elementary. Before the winter break, Christmas holidays, uh, Mountain View Elementary had a book drive. And there are nine hundred students plus at Mountain View, and through the book drive, they made sure that every student at Clay Elementary had a book to read over the holidays. When I read this in the paper, I, I've known Dr. Garrus for years and years, and, um, when I read this in the paper, I couldn't wait to call her and say, um, how excited I was and how it warmed my heart to know that Mountain View donated books for Clay. And, uh, we also have the principal Cynthia Winter from Clay with us and Dr. Renee Garrus. So, um, I just want to say thank you to Mountain View for being a giver and for Clay being a recipient, and just how wonderful it is to know that our schools are partners like this from one end of the county to the other. And, um, it just warms my heart to know that Mountain View students took it upon themselves to do this, um, for some of their friends in the, in other part of the county. So Commissioner Cupid covers, uh, Clay Elementary, that's in her district. So we wanted her to, um, give out the certificates for Clay, and I'm gonna give out the certificates for Mountain View. So, um, and we also would like to hear from our school board member and our state rep, Mr. Allen.
Well, I'll just be very brief. I just want to say, this is what makes Cobb great. This is what will continue to make Cobb great for generations. Um, so I'm just excited to be here and thank you, each one of the students and the parents for what you've done.
I just want to say congratulations, and I always say Cobb County has the best of the best.
Amen. Do you want to say anything?
I just want to say that, um, I am so proud of our Sunshine Committee, which is made up of our staff members, Sharon Hackney, Jessica Sutton, um, Jess, Jennifer Gates. Um, they are the ones that spearheaded it, and when they told me it was Clay Elementary, it was very near and dear to my heart because I attended Clay Elementary. So it was a joy, it was a joy and honor to be able to deliver the books, um, to Clay Elementary and to get to see some of the, um, people that I actually went to elementary school with still working at Clay. So it was like, it was like a family reunion when I went, so it was very heartwarming. And we love Cindy.
Um, yes, it was a great experience for our students and staff, and the expressions on their face when they opened the books was priceless, and we took a nice video, our media specialist did that, um, and we were very grateful, and it was great to have Renee. Renee and I share the same birthday, so not only was she a student, but we also shared the same birthday. So it is really nice. Um, Cobb County is the best county to work in. Um, we have wonderful families and community, greater communities, um, you know, service people, everybody that supports our county. So, um, I'm very thankful to, um, Mountain View for all that you did to support our students, and for my students and my staff, we have an amazing staff, and we love and appreciate all that was given to us, so thank you.
Great things happen through partnership, and it's nice to see the beneficiaries of that. That's our future. So just thank you for honoring both schools tonight, Joanne, truly appreciate it.
It's an honor. Okay, so because there's so many students at these schools, what we did was we did, um, a certificate of appreciation for the principals, assistant principal, and, um, the classes, each grade. So if a teacher from fifth, fourth, third, all the way down can just have a certificate.
Thank you.
And then I have one more thing to add. It doesn't stop with the book drive for Mountain View. If you read the M D J today, and I'm giving the M D J a plug, where's our Alex? Um, there was another story about Mountain View Elementary. There's a hundred and four-year-old Major Bill White, who is a World War II vet, who the school are making Valentine cards for Major Bill White to show their appreciation for our veterans. So it doesn't stop there. There, and there are other schools that are doing partnerships with other schools too that, um, there's just too many to recognize because Cobb is the best place to live. Okay, so now we get a picture.
Kids in front, scoot in.
Okay, everybody? Alright, good. Everybody look, here we go. Three, two, one, keep smiling, and we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out.
Y'all are doing good things, okay?
Thank you so much, Joanne, that was very helpful.
Okay, Kelly's next.
Okay, our next presentation, Commissioner Gambro will be presenting certificates of recognition to the Harrison High School football team. So, if you all come on up. Big dudes. I know.
Come on up, guys. So if you guys want to come back a little bit more, you could, yeah. You knocked it in.
Well, it is my pleasure and honor to have the Harrison High School football team here. They won their first state football championship on December thirteenth of two thousand and nineteen at the Georgia Stadium with a twenty-seven win over region six A rival Alatuna High School. This victory also completed a perfect fifteen-and-oh record for the Harrison Hoyas. Congratulations. So, uh, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners would like to present the certificate of recognitions presented to Coach Matt Dickman of Harrison High School. We, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, congratulate you and the Harrison High School football team on winning their first class six A state championship, beating out Alatuna High School twenty to seven. This win sealed the second-ever undefeated season in Cobb football history and is the first-ever fifteen-and-oh season in the country, or in the county. As coach, you served a very important role in our sports experience as well as in our community. Your leadership helped make this momentous occasion possible. We applaud your commitment to the excellence as you continue to shape students' athletic careers. Therefore, we have certificates for Matt Dickman, the head coach, Josh Cassidy, the assistant head coach, B.J. Locke, who is also a coach, and then team members Ryan Smith, okay, Cole Story. Cole didn't make it. Caleb Williamson, Tony Garcia, Mason Boland, Ethan Hellman, and Bryce Stanfield. Did I get everyone? Oh, Coach Fisher, I'm sorry, thank you. We'll get you a certificate as well. Thank you very much.
Lee, just stay there. We're gonna all come down to, uh... Okay, um, now the, um, county manager would like the board to join him, uh, down front so we can, uh, present two, uh, proclamations to two of our, uh, really, really outstanding staff members.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you. Um, tonight, we're going to present, uh, a couple of proclamations to some fellows that I have had the pleasure of working with side by side for the last thirty-plus years. Um, we're gonna start by asking, uh, Mr. Michael Hughes, our Economic Development Director, to, to come up. Um, Michael, uh, is joined by his family tonight, his lovely wife Carmen, his mother Pat, I think his sister-in-law is here as well. I saw there, her back there with Michael's niece. Yes, um, if you guys would, please come up, thank you. And I'd just like to, to take a moment before we read the proclamation that we're gonna present to Michael, just to share with everybody, um, what a friendship he and I have developed in addition to a very incredible relationship. Um, I was honored to ask to speak at his retirement party on Friday, and I hope everybody there, uh, was able to gather from the message I delivered that he's probably one of the finest men I've ever met. A family man, a man of faith, a man of principle, and the county's gonna miss him greatly. He's going on to big and bigger and better things, uh, but, um, for the sake of brevity, I'm, I'm going to summarize the proclamation. Uh, whereas over his thirty-four-year career, Michael Hughes has worked on land use zoning, ordinance, federal grant programs, federal appropriation requests, environmental planning projects, and economic development, uh, efforts. After graduating from California State Polytechnic University Pomona with a bachelor's degree in urban planning, Hughes worked as a city planner in Los Angeles and Pasadena before moving to the metro Atlanta area. Hughes, whereas Hughes began his career in Cobb County in nineteen ninety, um, as a senior planner for two years, um, Michael left after four years as an urban planner and senior environmental planner in the public and private sector. Hughes returned to Cobb County in nineteen ninety-six and ascended to the Economic Development Director role in nineteen ninety-eight. Whereas Hughes has cultivated effective working relationships with many important economic development partners in the state and region, under his leadership, Cobb has implemented many innovative economic incentive and development incentives such as business concierge, business walks, the entrepreneurship and innovation grant program, and the facade improvement program. Whereas Hughes has helped attract and retain companies such as Home Depot, H.D. Supply, Day Paper, FedEx, G E Energy, and ThyssenKrupp Elevator. In addition to his work with the county, Hughes is a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, a graduate of Leadership Cobb, and a graduate of the county's Excel Management Development Program. Therefore, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we sincerely thank Michael Hughes for his transforming our county over the past two and a half decades by fostering economic prosperity and growth. And wish him the very, very best as he pursues new career endeavors in Paulding County. Congratulations, Michael, we owe you a big debt.
Just want to take a few moments to, um, first thank you for the opportunity to serve this great community for the last twenty-five and a half years. It has been a, a pleasure and an honor to do so. I'll say, a lot of these things that, um, are listed in here, I certainly could not have done without the support of, uh, this board of commissioners and other board of commissioners that I've worked with over those twenty-five years. In addition to that, I've served or worked with two county managers during that time, Mr. David Hankerson and Rob Hosack, both of whom I respect and admire a great deal, and I appreciate their leadership and support during that time. Um, I also want to mention too, um, the executive management staff and the, and the staff that I've had the opportunity to work with, who share my commitment to, um, the success of this county. A lot of what I've been able to do could not be done without them, so I very much appreciate that. I want to end by just, um, introducing some very important people that are here with me and supported me this evening. My wife Carmen Hughes will celebrate twenty-nine years this May, and I'm excited about that. My mother Patricia Hughes. And then my sister-in-law Kishan Hughes, and my niece Cory. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
That's a tough one. Um, the, we're also going to do a proclamation this evening, and i- it's funny because he's gonna be fussing the whole way up here, uh, because the second person that we're gonna have the privilege of recognizing tonight is also somebody I've worked with for a very long time. Tell you a little bit about Steve McCullers. Um, Steve, and I'll apologize in advance to any engineers in the audience, but Steve is the only engineer...
the only engineer that's really been able to explain complex things to me in a way that I've been able to understand. I did want to take a moment. Steve was very, very deliberate in his request that this proclamation not be presented until after the appointment of his successor, who has been his deputy for a number of years, and Steve has mentored her very, very well. And I think anybody that knows Steve knows his quiet leadership style and knows how he looks out for his employees, probably more so than any of us would ever imagine him looking out for his employees. So to Steve's credit, he really wanted to get Judy, see her appointed, and didn't want to steal her thunder. Judy, Steve, this was actually something that we kinda had to do in order to make sure we had enough space for folks in the audience. So, very briefly, I'm gonna summarize the proclamation that we've prepared on Steve's behalf as well. Whereas under Steve McCullers stellar leadership, Cobb County Water System has consistently been recognized as an outstanding and fiscally responsible water system. He's been instrumental in the water system maintaining its AAA bond rating from all three rating agencies. And whereas McCullers began his career with Cobb Water as an engineer in 1993, developed a model of the county sewer system and wrote the 24 Sewer System Master Plan. Whereas due to his dedication and insight, McCullers was promoted to Division Manager of Engineering and Records in 1995, and again to Agency Director in 2007. Because of his foresight and vision, Cobb County Water constructed the $113 million Chattahoochee Tunnel in the early 2000s, blazing a path that other water agencies in the metro Atlanta area would soon follow by building tunnels for wastewater conveyance. Whereas McCullers effectively navigated Cobb County Water System through severe droughts in 2001 and 2008, and the historic flood of 2009. He negotiated an agreement with the City of Powder Springs to purchase its water and sewer systems in 2019. Under Steve's direction, Cobb County Water has earned countless awards for outstanding operations, programs, and environmental efforts. He has also been honored with individual recognitions, including the Golden Goose Award of Excellence and the Silver Eagle Award. Now, therefore, on behalf of the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, we do sincerely thank Steve McCullers for working diligently for more than 26 years to ensure our residents have safe drinking water and clean streams. His vision and guidance helped Cobb County Water flourish into an industry leader. We wish you well in your retirement, Steve.
Thank you, Rob. Michael, can I borrow your niece up here for a few minutes? I thought that was great. Like Michael, I'd like to thank the rest of the management team, without whom I could never have survived this. Thanks to all the staff at the water system, diligent, hard-working, out in the cold, wet weather, trying to make sure you all have good water and sewer service. Thanks to the county manager for the flexibility in letting us try to hire people and retain people in these difficult times. Thanks to the board, more for leaving us alone and letting us run the system the way it should be run. Really appreciate that. And congratulations to Judy, I guess it's going to be approved. Judy Jones, she'll do a great job. I've been telling everybody for years, think of me when you flush, from now on, you can think of Judy when you flush. Thanks, Steve.
tonight. We have a couple of items in our consent and regular agenda that may consume some time, and then of course, we have a number of proposed code amendments that people are lining up to talk about. So in order to ensure continuity in each one of these, we discussed rearranging the agenda today to make sure that everybody is accommodated, but in a way that's effective, that responds to your needs. So when you get up and make a comment, it's at the appropriate time, and the board can pay the appropriate attention to your comments because it fits the time that we fit in here. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna make a motion that we modify the agenda tonight to move the public hearings to after Agenda Item Number 38. So, do we have a second?
Second.
It's after the paying class, the second grade thing. So we have a second, any discussion? Call question? Okay, passes 4 to 0 with Commissioner Rod and absence. So now we're gonna go right into the regular, gonna start our first public comment, and we have six speakers. They each afforded five minutes each. I asked that when you come, well, we asked when you come up here, please let us know who you are and where you live. So with that, Mr. Rowling?
Thank you, Chairman. And the public speakers is five minutes each. There is a timer at the lectern, so you'd be able to see what your time has left. First speaker this evening is Monica Delancy.
Good evening, my name is Monica Delancy.
And I'm Georgia Tap.
So first, I would like to speak and make sure that I wanted to say thank you to everyone who offered their prayers. That went a long way. Your support, your phone calls, as my family and myself were transitioning to another home in the Riverside community. Being unexpectedly evicted from my home two weeks before Christmas was a shock because all it was, I just did not receive a notice to go to court, and when I received that notice, I will be able to make it right. So I just wanted to make sure that I say that. But also, just note that the reason why I'm still here is because I just want to make sure that we know that everyone would not be engineers, doctors, everyone would not make $100,000 a year. There would be people that work as customer service workers, retail, support workers. Everybody deserves a place to live, regardless of their income. But what's going on is, it's very difficult for workers who are making entry-level wages to maintain $900,000 rents. So that's why I'm still here. And also, Ms. Georgia would like to speak as well.
All right, Mr. Delancy, we have one item, one person per slot. So you have the whole five minutes.
Okay, so I will speak for Ms. Georgia. She would like for me to say the difficulty that people have that are receiving social security. Most social security checks are only $775 a month, and people who receive social security checks are not automatically given any type of rental assistance in vouchers. So those people struggle, especially if they don't have loved ones where they could go and live with them to be able to offset their rent. So somebody's receiving social security all their life, and their parents die, and the parents don't have, you know, insurance or anything like that, it would be very hard for someone who's receiving disability to maintain. And so she wanted me to share that with you as well. Right? Okay. In addition, I do want to share, I'm gonna pass this to you, is all of the updates from 2000, I'm gonna say start from November of 2018 up until January. And when I say all the updates, it's from the first time that we went on record for the ReThrive Riverside Rental Association discussing about the maintenance issues at three apartment complexes in the area. So from November 2018 up until November 20, it discusses everything from us coming to the meetings, voices of our concern, also having the timeline, how you made an effort, Ms. Keepa made an effort to not only come down to speak with residents, but to make sure that code enforcement follow up. Matter of fact, they're still following up and doing that, we want to thank you for that. It also discusses about how we hosted the National Night Out Against Crime event, health fairs at the apartment complex, as well as this past Christmas, the Community Affairs Department, Officer Jeff Tetra and Riverian Cole deliver bicycles to about 25 families in the Riverside community. So in there, it discusses all that, in addition to the fact that the new owners are making an effort to make sure that residents receive the maintenance issues and making sure that we have quality programs at Kingsley Village, Hunters Grove, and Parkview Apartments. So in closing, I'm not gonna close with a wish list, I'm gonna close with a man list for 2020. And the man list is safety. I do know that you've been noticing that we've had a number of incidents on the corner of Premier Lane and Riverside Parkway. About two weeks ago, a man lost his life. That corner is very, very, very hot, and so we want to make sure that we address that for 2020. In addition, we want to make sure that we pay close attention to what's going on in our schools. Our school Riverside will be transitioning to a K-5 schools, both Riverside. One of the schools will be renamed, so we make sure that the tender zone is done in such a way that it keeps families being able to progress. And also, let's not forget that we've got to make sure that not only are we having issues in the old apartments, now new apartments are having issues. So for 2020, we'll make sure that we stay on top of this because we want to make sure that renters are getting to do justice. There will be a renters' rights workshop on February 8th and February, I mean February 9th and February 10th.
Delancy, your time's up.
Well, thank you very much.
Cynthia Johnson?
I never do this, but I'm gonna do it today. Bear with me because this is the first time I ever spoke, especially with a large audience like this.
Please address the board.
My name is Cynthia Johnson, I live in Ostel. I reside in Walton Reserve Boulevard. I want to start out by saying, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but when he stands at times of challenge and controversy." That's from MLK Jr. "With that being said, I refuse to fall through the cracks. Everyone has a fundamental right, human right, to housing which ensures access to a safe, secure, habitable, and affordable home with freedom from forced evictions. It is the government's obligation to guarantee that everyone can exercise their right to live in security, peace, and dignity. To hear that someone has to choose between their home or the right to complain about inhumane conditions should really stick out and be a concern to each and every one of you. Government agencies and nonprofits that subsidize housing are not doing enough to pressure landlords over living conditions. These federally funded programs that exist are paying slum lords with no questions. In fact, there are stories that I've read online and spoken with many people that experienced what I've gone through in the last four months." Can you hold up the sign, please? Those are all the apartments, if you would like to take. There's a new, there's Kingsley Village, there's Birch Landings, there's Ostella Village, there's a new, and there's Walton Reserve Boulevard is where I reside. Many tenants access Georgia Fight Mold, including Black Mold, which is one of the most leading causes of asthma attacks in children, which is the leading reason why children miss school. Water leaks, and sewage, a ramech mold, rat infestation, residents' descriptions of such conditions in some Cobb County apartment complexes recently underscored environmental hazards that tenants can face. In Georgia, renters have the right to complain about unlivable conditions, and landlords have a legal duty to make necessary repairs. But tenants say it can be difficult to get such remediation actions taken. They say many renters fear retaliation, including the possibility of eviction from making a complaint. The problem is, slum lords neglect owners who fail to maintain decent conditions in their rental properties. Tenants are faced with unhealthy conditions that often don't have the money to go to a lawyer, and eventually the lawyer can move another family into the hazardous house. Tenants should have to weigh the risk of calling the code enforcement against the possibility of eviction. Tenants are often fearful of landlords and want to avoid eviction, which could lead to homelessness. Most tenants are underprivileged, therefore they either don't fight back, or they're left defending themselves against their people, including the property manager, her boss, and their attorney. You can sense a bit of desperation and fear in tenants that are put into this horrific situation as I have been placed in. "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter," Martin Luther King Jr. stated. "We live in days and ages where it's impossible to stay silent about the things that matter. In fact, it's irresponsible. Yet, why do so many souls remain silent when there's so much that needs to be said? Let's honor the legacy of Martin Luther King Jr. by speaking up and arguing to make this world a better and safe place for all," Bishop Jake stated. I want to thank Chairman Boyce, Southern Christian Leadership Conference, New Order National Human Rights Organization, the NWSACP, Monica Delancy, and Austin Community Task Force for stepping up for me in the time of my need. I'm battling an issue that I will not give up. I started the We Are One Tenant Association in Walton Reserve, and I'm hoping to push other tenants and other communities to stand up, hear your voice, because without hearing your voice, they will never know the problem. I hope that you listen to everyone that steps up.
Ms. Johnson, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you for listening to me today.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Be blessed.
My name is Susan Hampton, and I'm a resident of East Cobb County. As you know, I am a big advocate for Cobb County public safety. Just under one year ago, I spoke to some of you one-on-one, put together a flyer titled, "Cobb Law Enforcement in Crisis," attended numerous town hall meetings, and spoke to anyone that would listen. I also appeared at this podium on many occasions. The citizens of Cobb County several times packed this room, along with the men and women of our public safety agencies, begging for something to be done about the crisis. Eventually, the Board of Commissioners acknowledged that there was a big problem, a problem that was more than six-plus years in the making, and I think eventually agreed that it was time to stop kicking the can down the road. Then, and only then, did good things begin to happen. The commissioners began to listen to the citizens of Cobb County and also to the public safety representatives, and a dialogue was opened. Since that time, there has been bonuses paid to sworn public safety officers, actually that was from their existing budget, and a pay increase was implemented. Now, we need the second grade, which I hope will be voted on tonight. After this positive vote, we still have work to do to address the compression in the higher ranking employees, but a lot has been done in the last 11 months. It took years to create the public safety mess in Cobb County. However, the last year has shown positive results when everyone works together. I challenge you to never allow... I challenge you to never allow public safety in Cobb County to be removed from the number one priority in your future, uh, budget plans. I also want to remind you that only with a safe and protected county can we continue to attract new businesses that contribute to our tax digest, that keep our taxes low. Only with a safe and protected county can we keep the citizens residing in Cobb County while they raise their families and then later in their golden years remain here. Only with a safe and protected county can we expect non-residents to come to Cobb County where they are able to play, shop and spend their money. I want to thank you for your attention and action addressing the public safety issues in Cobb County. But I want to remind you that the game is not over, so please do not drop the ball now. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan Hampton. David Stallworth?
Yes, my name is David Stallworth. I'm a resident of West Cobb. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. We, the residents of Clark Subdivision, are facing a very formidable threat to our neighborhood and our quality of life. We hope that the Cobb County Commission will help us to get a fair hearing of our concerns. It is an issue of jurisdiction and zoning on the border between the city of Marietta and Cobb County. Chapel Drive is the only access street to our neighborhood. From Powder Springs Street, there is presently a vacant lot for sale on the corner of Chapel Drive and Powder Springs Street. A prospective purchaser has applied for a privileged license to build and operate a liquor store at this location by our homes. We believe that this liquor store would have an exceedingly damaging effect to our neighborhood and impose an unreasonable risk to the safety of all those trying to enter and exit Chapel Drive onto Powder Springs Street. We sincerely hope that you will help us to convey our opposition to this privileged license zoning before the meeting of the Marietta City Council on February the fifth at ten AM. One additional comment concerning the privileged license zoning. It is the same type of zoning that massage parlors and adult stores are required to have. We believe this zoning would end up being their undeserved privilege and our undesired major problem. Please partner with us to prevent this privileged zoning.
Thank you, sir. Kimberly Peace Hill?
Hello, I'm Kim Peace Hill. I live in Kennesaw. Um, on January the sixteenth, I opened up the Marietta Daily Journal and I saw the headline that read, "It'll be huge." Although the comments given to that reporter were not all completely accurate, the comments that jumped out at me and that I do take issue with were how huge and gigantic the proposal plan would be. What I have heard from public safety personnel since this plan was announced is that the issue of pay scale compression is a real concern to the more senior public safety officers. The initial phase of this plan does not provide much incentive to senior personnel to remain in Cobb. Instead, you're asking these officers to be patient, to wait for this plan to take effect over the next few years. The problem is this, they've been patient, they've been patient, they've been loyal, they've been hopeful, and they've prayed that one day this board would step up and fix this mess. So now you have a proposal that will give many of them a raise just pennies on the first year. You expect them to be faithful and to trust you, yet you do not want to commit to any guarantees that the adjustments needed to relieve this compression issue will even happen, happen after the initial year. And given the history of this issue, I really honestly can't blame them. So I just want to tell you what a few of them are saying, because you know, I, I do hear. It's horrible. I have lots of wor- of choice words for this. The raise is so insignificant, it's basically a joke. So it will have to be voted into budget annually, offering zero security in the pay increase. It's abysmal and pathetic. This scale does nothing for retention. They need to make this a set scale, and when it comes time to vote on budget, they can reallocate funds from other places to show that they really feel this is a priority over dog parks and new road construction. It's infuriating. I don't trust any revisions later unless they are set in stone because the Board of Commissioners is flaky. It's absolutely enraging at this point to me. Someone else says it's so ridiculous, they say they don't have the money to put into it to do a proper stepping grade, and yet we see stupid news stories all the time lately of all the county attorneys and judges getting crazy raises and all sorts of other spending shenanigans. It's maddening. There's more, but I'm not going to read them all. I may wake up tomorrow morning and find, uh, the media is portraying this as a big step and that this board has saved the day with the passing of this proposed pay schedule plan. But let's be honest, shall we? It's not huge, it's not gigantic. It represents, what it does do, what it does do, it represents a small step that could potentially help over the long term, but only if the officers who stand to see the least from it in the first year are given a guarantee that their increases will be better next year. It's not fair and it's not right to expect them to continue being faithful to a board who has not done right by them in many years. Our public officers, public safety officers deserve much better than that. As one veteran officer said to me very recently, "Don't toss them M and Ms. and tell them it's a Rolls Royce." I'm encouraging you, like Susan Hampton stated, I'm encouraging you to stay with this. If you're going to do this, don't drop the ball. Give them some guarantees and assurances, make a commitment that if you're going to do this this year, that next year and the year after and the year after that, you're going to stay with it. You're not going to vote and potentially turn it down or walk away from it or drop that proverbial ball and cause this compression issue to become even more maddening. Thank you.
Sheila Edwards?
Good evening, Chairman Boyce and members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Sheila Edwards and I reside in the Mableton Community of South Cobb. And I want to share two concepts with you, um, tonight. Personal responsibility and community responsibility. We have an obligation to live up to our own personal responsibilities, and then we have an obligation to turn around and protect our community. Um, for several meetings, I, as lo- as well as others from the community, have come to you to ask for your involvement in the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. We requested this action on your part because of what we believe to be a failure by the board to act in accordance with the goals and missions of the authority as it relates to Magnolia Crossing in the South Cobb area. Because of these failings as well as others, we question the continued existence of the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. Those questions continue. On Monday, I attended a South Cobb Redevelopment Authority Board meeting that was held at the Mable House. Um, I was there as well as others from the community. The board that is supposed to meet monthly had not met since November. So this meeting represented their first meeting of the year. The new year picked up where the, where twenty nineteen left off. Poor participation by the board, as only three of the seven members were in attendance. As a result, very little could take place without the required quorum. After quickly skimming through the agenda items that did not require quorum, the time came for the representatives from the Bleakley Group to make a presentation. Please recall that this is the group selected by the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority that has been paid forty thousand dollars to conduct a study of the Six Flags area of South Cobb. As a backdrop, please recall that this is the second study that's been done within a few years, which costs the taxpayers another forty thousand dollars. In addition, please recall that this study was never acted upon and instead was placed on a bookshelf somewhere where it collects dust to this day. The Bleakley representative made his presentation, which included references to persons who have been added to the stakeholder group and advisory group to that, um, organization from the community, as well as a brief discussion on what they were tasked with studying. Hands immediately went up into the air, including my own, as the representative had failed to mention Magnolia Crossing as an area that he had been tasked to study. In addition, the two people he identified that were selected by the chair to be on the stakeholder group, both reside in other parts of metro Atlanta and not in South Cobb. So let me recap this for you. We have a board that is chaired by someone who does not live in our community of South Cobb. We have board members, uh, that either don't live in our community or whose times have expired years ago with no reappointment occurring and none in sight. And as a result, they have no accountability to us. Now we have a stakeholder group that has been appointed, uh, that is comprised of people that don't, don't even live in our community. What's wrong with this picture? So he heard our concerns and saw hands raised with questions that he refused to allow the community to ask questions at the Bleakley Group. Instead, he directed all questions to be asked of him at the end of the meeting. Those like me who've seen this ruse before declined because we sensed that this process is already being controlled and steered into a direction that will exclude quality development of Magnolia Crossing. The process is also clearly designed to suppress comments from advocates in the community who have been speaking out continuously on the failure of the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority as reflected in this article that goes back to October twenty nineteen. It may be a new year with new hopes and new goals, but it's the same old dog and pony show from the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority to keep our community from advancing. Nothing will change until we get better leadership elected to the roles that have governance and control over our quality of life, and nothing will change until we appoint better representations and important boards in our community such as the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority, or dissolve those dysfunctional organizations that mass themselves as being in our community to help us when they are only hurting our community and holding us back. Nothing will change until we ensure that money is being allocated in the county, includes allocations to South Cobb. Our community is great and is poised for even more greatness. We will, we will not accept anything less. With the support of the community, we will lead the resurgence South Cobb deserves. Thank you.
Chairman, that concludes our speaker's republic comment.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, we'll go to the consent agenda and scroll that down, please. Okay, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize extrude some necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero, Commissioner Otten absent. All right, on the regular agenda, um, it is my, uh, it is my pleasure to recommend the appointment to this Water System Agency Director, Judy Jones. Second? Everyone seconds it, all right? Any discussion? Call a question. That passes four to zero, and I'd like to have Judy come up, please. Good night, absolutely. This is intended to embarrass you.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to say thank you to the board and to the county manager for this opportunity to pick up where Steve is leaving off. I have big shoes to fill, um, but I'm looking forward to the challenge and I just really appreciate it. And, um, I'm looking forward to serving the citizens of Cobb and the businesses of Cobb and the water system staff, um, in this new role.
Okay, um, I'm going to go on to the transportation agenda now. Uh, Ms. Bersh?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. And we have a few items for consideration, and the first item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA thirty-two dash three dash four, authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel on Timber Trail at South Gordon Road, project number X twenty-two forty-eight, adopt a resolution and order informed substantially similar to the attached and is approved by the county attorney's office.
Commissioner Cooper?
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero, Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars for twenty nineteen County Wide Americans with Disabilities Act's compliance sidewalks.
Uh, Commissioner Burrow?
Second.
Discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero, Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with CMEs Inc. in an amount not to exceed nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-five cents for bridge replacements on Woodland Brook Drive over Gilmore Creek.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero, Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you, sir. The next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with W E contracting the savings to the project in the amount of twenty-five thousand, fifty-four dollars and forty cents for demolition of two structures located at nine sixty-eight Kennesaw Avenue and nine seventy-two Kennesaw Avenue for construction of Old Forty-One Highway.
located at 968 Kennesaw Avenue and 972 Kennesaw Avenue for construction of Old 41 Highway.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero, Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to the Contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC. The savings to the project in the amount of $132,216.33 for Beechhaven Trail sidewalks.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero, Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you. The next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One to the Contract with Masana Construction Inc. for Bridge Rehabilitation on Windy Hill Road over Rottenwood Creek and No Cost Time Extension through March 30th of 2020.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero, Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you. The next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve an encroachment agreement with Colonial Pipeline Company for encroachment upon an existing utility easement located on Paces Ferry Road at New Paces Ferry Road, Paces Mill Road, Twin Lakes Drive.
Motion to approve? Discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero, Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you. And our last item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve an encroachment agreement with Cobb County Marietta Water Authority for encroachment upon an existing utility easement located on Riverview Road.
Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero, Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Erica. All right, now on to property management.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Property management's got one item. It's for New Fire Station One. If the Board of Commissioners approve agreement with controlled access incorporated in the amount of $64,935 for the purchase and installation of county enterprise access, control, and surveillance system at the new fire station one located at 5781 Mabelton Parkway, Mabelton, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you, sir.
Now, public safety. Director Kreider?
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Public Safety has two items. The first one is to authorize the reallocation of funds from various 2016 SPOLOST public safety projects to the Public Safety Training Center 2016 SPOLOST Program X 1050. On November 4, 2014, the citizens approved the 2016 Special Purpose Locust Sales Tax SPOLOST Program to fund various public safety-related capital improvement projects. The Public Safety Training Center located at 2435 East West Connector in Osteal was one of these projects, and at the time of the original renovation estimate, design and approvals were still in process. Throughout discussions with public safety staff and the architectural team, and as specifications were solidified, focused effort has been employed to maximize the use of all in-house resources and create project saving opportunities wherever possible. To maintain the schedule and manage the complexity and quality of work, it's been determined that an additional contracted services in an amount of $700,000 are required. Combined savings in the amount of $204,310.40 are available from the following completed projects. Public Safety Parking Lot Repairs, Animal Control Incinerator Program, Weather Cyrene Equipment Program, Police Evidence Vans Program, and Animal Control Vans Program X 1061. The Police Precinct Renovations Project Program X 1040 is underway with much work complete. The amount of $495,689.60 has been determined by Public Safety as available for use at the Public Safety Training Center. Recommendation is that the Board of Commissioners authorize reallocation of funds from various 2016 SPOLOST public safety projects in the amount of $700,000 to the Public Safety Training Center SPOLOST Program X 105 located at 2435 East West Connector, Osteal, and further authorizes corresponding budget transactions.
Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question. Passes four to zero. I think that was Project X 1050, right?
Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Some phantom project out there.
That's it.
All right?
All right, item number two for public safety. The purpose is to authorize an amendment to the classification and pay schedule, implement the public safety step and grade plan, and amend the compensation policy for sworn personnel. With me tonight to present this item, I have Sheriff Neil Warren. I also have our Human Resource Director, Tony Hagler, and our Finance Director, Bill Volkman. All of these have been very instrumental in the compilation of this agenda item and the research and work that's been going on in addition to working with the County Manager to get to what we have to present for you tonight. So, to state again, this item is to approve and amend amendment to the classification pay schedule, implement the public safety step and grade plan, and amend the compensation policy for sworn personnel. Cobb County has experienced significant difficulty in recruiting and retaining qualified sworn personnel due to current compensation and benefits for Cobb County Police, Fire, and Sheriff Office personnel. A recent pay study and the results of an employee survey of sworn public safety personnel have revealed that compensation and benefits as a major factor for those leaving sworn positions for reasons other than retirement. In an effort to reverse this trend, the Board of Commissioners has approved an education and shift differential pay program. You've provided retention incentives, county-funded state retirement dues, 3% pay adjustment for sworn public safety positions, and 4% merit increases. A continued effort to address recruitment and retention includes amending the classification and pay schedule for sworn personnel, implementing the public safety step and grade plan with placing each sworn person in their step based on their current base pay, and reviewing and adjusting the step and grade pay structure on an annual basis as approved by the Board of Commissioners. As an ongoing effort to address the aforementioned challenges, Public Safety Agency and Sheriff's Office have developed a step and grade plan. This plan will increase the starting pay from $41,615 to $46,000 to improve recruitment, and all other pre-grades for sworn classifications have been adjusted in similar fashion to improve retention. The step and grade plan will be reviewed by the County Manager and staff on an annual basis to determine effectiveness. The recommendation is that the Board of Commissioners approve an amendment to the classification and pay schedule, implement the public safety step and grade plan to be effective beginning pay period March 22, 2020, for hourly paid sworn positions in public safety and the Sheriff's Office, amend the compensation policy for sworn personnel, authorize the necessary budget transactions, authorize the County Manager to proceed working with county staff to develop a policy to review the step and grade plan on an annual basis to determine effectiveness, including an annual step as a top priority in future adopted budgets, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow?
I make a motion to approve the step and grade plan for public safety.
I'll second that. Discussion? First of all, Sheriff Warren, you have some comments you'd like to make?
Chairman and Board of Commissioners, we have worked on this plan for quite some time, along with the County Manager and my staff at the Sheriff's Office, the PD staff and the Fire Department. And I think it's an outstanding move. It's something that is well overdue. It's something that we need to get started on. And the most important thing besides getting this first phase is to continue this down the road, because that's where the problem is always been a problem at the end. We don't finish the product, so to speak. So I commend you for giving the County Manager and us all the time to work with y'all, and I strongly ask that y'all support this, because it's for the hard-working, dedicated men and women that put their life on the line every day, even from the Fire Department to the deputies that's working in the jails, the deputies in court securities, the deputies out serving wards, and PD officers. It's just something that's got to be done so that we can maintain the quality of law enforcement personnel that we need here in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other comments from the Board? Any questions from the Board members? Commissioner Cupid? Sure.
This has been an ongoing press for our Board to be responsive to the ongoing challenges that we have had in recruiting and retaining persons in public safety. This is a step forward. This is not a panacea. But it is an opportunity for us to act upon a commitment made to implement this plan. In fact, when I reviewed my notes from our last budget cycle, or excuse me, not only the budget cycle, but when we gave an incentive for public safety, it was our thought to wait until the budget deliberations to implement the step and grade program. We have opportunity to do something towards that now. And I'm trusting in the assurances of our leadership in the Sheriff's Office and in police and in fire that we're moving in the right direction. I think all of us on the Board understand that we have additional action to implement the plan. And while we are limited, legally limited, in how we can commit this Board to future dollar spend, I hope that our actions over the last year will show that we are moving in the right direction. And I know we will have continued advocacy of those who spoke today and those who are in this room, that we will continue to move in the right direction. And I'm glad to support this tonight. I do know that at some point, we will have to determine an ongoing source of revenue, and I can't say that this will not have a tax impact on our county in the future. It could. But we're fortunate with the revenue that the county's been receiving to be able to confidently move forward in the way we're doing tonight. And I'm hoping a few months from now, we'll just continue moving in the right direction until the plan is implemented. So I appreciate all the work that staff has done to put forward something that you will have our support in tonight, and know that you will continue to work diligently to ensure that we're doing right by those in public safety and by the county in making sure that we're properly staffed and that we're recruiting the best.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'm going to say I'm going to support this proposal. I know Director Kreider has put a lot of time and effort into this, and I support the direction he's going. However, I still have concerns on how this Board is going to get there. And as I mentioned yesterday in work session, I would like to see this Board put forth a policy to ensure that excess funding that we collect from the TAVT tax, in addition to what we're already planning for to implement this first step, is put into a reserve to help fund the future bumps that are necessary to ensure the full implementation of this proposal. Just some interesting things. The revenue from property tax alone in 2019 totaled $392,332,767. However, our total payroll was $414,174,087. Right there, just in our property tax collections alone, we were short $21 million just to fund our payroll alone. So my challenge to this Board is how are we going to not make up only that $21 million deficit, but the additional funds we're now going to require for public safety in addition to keeping the county viable? The vote tonight is not only to implement a step and pay for the county, for public safety for the county, but it should also be an indicator that this Board is going to fund the other entities within this county that help supply the revenue that keeps us viable and enables us to afford our public safety and our parks and our water system and such. Therefore, my vote and support tonight is also a vote to ensure that this Board continues to fund those other entities as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before I call the question... I'm sorry, I apologize, Commissioner.
Hey. I am the Public Safety Liaison Commissioner this year, so you can't... I get to speak too.
Yes, you do.
First of all, I agree with you, Sheriff. This is long overdue. We made some strides with the bonus and the 7% pay increase, and we committed then... Some of the speakers tonight alluded to the fact that we did commit that we would move forward on a path for the step and grade, because we knew that that needed to be done as well. And we're coming back before the budget process, as Commissioner Cupid stated, to implement this in March, for the March 22nd pay period, before the budget hearings and implementation. So I'm hoping that you realize that we are committed. We have been saying that public safety is our number one priority, but now we're putting our money where our mouth is. And I can assure you, as long as I'm in this seat, it will be my number one priority, and I am committed to moving forward on this. Legally, it has to come back to us every year, because we can't bind a future Board of Governors. And the attorneys in the room know what I'm talking about, and hopefully the public understands as well. But that doesn't mean, as Commissioner Gamble said, if we change our policy to assure that we will do this moving forward. And I'm making a personal commitment myself that it will remain my number one priority, and I'll do all I can to move this forward each year that I'm sitting here. So thank you. And thank you, Director Kreider, Tony, Bill Volkman and the County Manager, and of course, the Sheriff and Fire for all your input and hard work and dedication to get us an excellent plan here that we can start in March and continue on each year. Thank you.
I'd also like to thank the state for changing the TAVT formula. All right? So I'm going to let credit go to yours due. I also want to thank the FOP and the Farmers Union. We made a concerted effort to broaden the universe of discussion on this subject, and I think that this goes to show you that, you know, the more minds you have, the better product you have sometimes. And I think this truly reflects that. And the last thing I want to say is that I hope every one of you here on the Board appreciate how big a moment this is for this Board. And I really want to thank all of you, and I'm really proud of all of you. So that, I call a motion. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Otten absent. And what I'd like to do is every single person in this room that's in public safety, I'd like them to join us with the Board down front here for the famous photo op.
Congratulations. Thank y'all. Good job, brothers. Thank you.
Come on over here, I want you right here, buddy.
You guys somehow wet yourself in that way. It's not your best side, Chris. All right, here we go. Out here, three, two, one, I got y'all in?
We're going to take a break, yeah? Okay, so we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break, and then we're going to start the public hearings right after that, okay? So let's go ahead and do your thing for five minutes. Have to get, have to get everybody out of the aisle here. It's a, I think I got the fire marshal in the room here, you know. Okay, we have a couple of public hearings tonight, and I just want to let everybody know that the pretty simple rules for each public hearing. The first one is on a Chattahoochee corridor plan certificate. Everyone gets three minutes and an unlimited number of speakers. Please let us know who you are and where you live, and then we'll let you make your comments. So with that, I think, Jessica, you got the floor here? So I think tonight, the first public hearing is on the approval of the Chattahoochee corridor plan certificate of compliance for new pump station enforced may need by the Fulton County Department of Public Works located on the National Park Service property near Johnson Ferry Road Unit. With that, I think I've spoken everything for you, right?
Absolutely. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Jessica Gwen, Cobb County Community Development. And yes, I believe this is the one everyone's here for tonight. So just as the agenda item said, this is a Chattahoochee corridor plan certificate of compliance for a new pump station enforced may need by the Fulton County Department of Public Works. And there will be a new force main going through the National Park property over near the Johnson Ferry Road Unit. It has been reviewed by the Atlanta Regional Commission and, you know, conformity to the Metropolitan River Protection Act, and they have found that this is consistent with the Chattahoochee corridor plan. And we need to hold a public hearing. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Okay, great, thanks. So that, I now declare this public hearing open regarding the approval of the Chattahoochee corridor plan certificate compliance for a new pump station forced may need by the Fulton County Department of Public Works located with the National Park Service property near Johnson Ferry Road. Would anybody like to make comments, have any comments about this proposal? Seeing none, I now close this public hearing closed? No, they're all in. Okay. Is there one or two, is this the only one?
This is the only one.
So we vote on this tonight, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so with that, I make a motion that we approve the certificate of compliance as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
It does have all the ARC on the profile.
Yes, okay. We have a second and discussion. Call a question. Passes four to zero with Commissioner Otten absent.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the second public hearing is on a number of code amended proposals. And with that, I'll turn the floor over to the County Manager, Mr. Jose.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Tonight, we are requesting that the board conduct the first public hearing to solicit comment and input on proposed amendments to Chapters 2, 10, 18, 54, 66, 78, 90, and 134 of the Cobb County Code. By way of very brief background, Mr. Chairman, the board will entertain amendments to the County Code throughout the year. This is the first of two public hearings that are anticipated and scheduled and advertised to solicit comment and input on the proposed revisions or amendments to the code. We will be receiving input tonight. There'll be a second public hearing on February 11th at 9:00 a.m., at which time any changes to the amendments will be presented to the board. And after conducting the second public hearing on February 11th, the board would be authorized to adopt the amendments as may be amended after receiving public comments, sir. With that background, we would request, Mr. Chairman, that you open the first public hearing.
Okay, so do we want to make the presentations first for information, or do you want to open the public hearing?
Yes, sir. I think what staff would recommend is we briefly introduce the amendments that are going to be considered by the board. And then I think that the board could invite the public to come up and make their comments.
Okay, so let's do that.
Very good. Well, we'll start out with Chapter 2, and I can introduce that one for the board. This is simply a clarification to allow for our Code Enforcement Division to enforce the terms of the Historic Preservation Ordinance. And with that particular amendment, they would be authorized to enforce the provisions of such amendment. Also included in that, Mr. Chairman, would then being allowed to also enforce the provisions of our Filming Ordinance. I'm going to ask Mr. Randy Kreider and his staff to come up to introduce the proposed amendments to Chapter 10.
Okay. Joining me is our Animal Services Division Director, Shannon Luke. So we'd look at, first of all, go back one slide, please, sir. In 10-1, there are a number of definitions that are being proposed either to be deleted, added, or edited. And that is in Section 10-1. And in Section 10-11, on the control of animals, in the first paragraph, it will be unlawful for the owner of any animal, with the exception of cats, to permit such feline animal to be out of his or her immediate control and restraint or to be left unattended off the premises of the owner or to be upon the property of another person without the permission of the owner or person in possession of such other property. In Section 2, Paragraph A, "When on the premises of the owner, all animals, with the exception of cats, shall be kept indoors or in a primary enclosure as defined by this chapter in such a manner as to contain the animal..." a manner as to contain the animals within the bounds of the owner's premises, or on a leash, in the hands of a person that possesses the ability restraint, to restrain the animal." Paragraph B, "When off the premises of the owner, all animals, with the exceptions of cats, shall at a minimum be maintained on an appropriate chain, leash, or tie, not exceeding six feet in length, and in the hands of a person who possesses the ability to restrain the animal." In the next section, 10-37.
Randy?
Yes, sir.
I thought we agreed on 10 yesterday.
Excuse me?
The least, I thought it was 10.
Okay, I didn't make that note, but we can make-
That's our suggestion, but we've got to hear from, that's from some of the-
Our suggestion from the Board is 10.
Okay.
Then we'll hear a public comment about that, all right? But-
Okay, so you want to include the 10 at this point?
Right, right. And then we can have, the public can comment on that, all right? But that's our proposal. Still has to be voted on.
Okay. All right. In 10-37, under fees, "The fees with respect to all services performed in connection with enforcement of this chapter shall be set forth by the Board of Commissioners from time to time. A copy of such fee schedule shall be posted at the headquarters of the Cobb County Animal Shelter and may be changed at any time and from time to time as to determine, as determined by the Board of Commissioners." Paragraph B, "A person or entity who relinquishes ownership of his or her dog to Cobb County Animal Services shall be assessed a fee payable at the time his or her dog is surrendered to Cobb County Animal Shelter for care and custody." Paragraph C, "The fees established and collected under this chapter and/or pursuant to the responsible dog ownership law set forth at OCGA 4-8-20 are not penalties but are imposed for the sole purpose of defraying expenses borne by the county for such animal control and welfare under this chapter or under state law and are subject to change at any time. Cobb County Animal Shelter may waive any part of the normal required fees at its discretion." The next is 10-6-
Randy, hold on. Mr. Burrow has a question.
Okay.
Your liaison has a question.
10-37B.
Yes, ma'am.
We want to delete that. And instead of a fee for owner turn in, we want to make it a donation if they so choose.
Okay.
So we, we want to take out a mandatory fee for owner turn in.
And, if I can-
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Cuban.
There may be a reason why your fee is desired. I don't know if it's to get revenue for the organization, but if there's any fiscal impact that you want us to be aware of, please let us know, because we want to, you know, ensure that you're being supportive but not deter people from, you know-
Sure.
-turning in animals that they can't keep.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we good with 10-37?
Yes, sir.
All right. Moving on to Section 10-67, under animal impoundment, redemption, and adoption. "With the exception of those animals confiscated under Sections 1013B, 1013C, 1097, 10-21.2D, and/or 10-121.7, all impounded animals shall be kept at the animal shelter for a period of not less than five working days unless redeemed within such period." Paragraph C, "Notwithstanding subsection B of this provision, other than feral cats confiscated pursuant to Sections 10-13B, 10-13C, 10-17, and/or 10-121.7, any impounded feral cats shall be eligible for immediate release from the animal shelter for the purpose of returning such cats to the area from which they were found, provided such feral cats are sterilized, ear tipped, and vaccinated for rabies. Cobb County Animal Shelter shall, has discretion to determine whether to keep an eligible feral cat at the shelter or release it pursuant to this provision." And then Section 10-30, 10-135, prohibition on the sale of dogs and cats at pet stores. Paragraph A, "No pet store shall sell, deliver, offer for sale, barter, auction, giveaway, or otherwise transfer dogs or cats. Nothing in this section shall prevent the owner, operator, or employee of a pet store retail business or other commercial establishment located in Cobb County from, from providing space and appropriate care for dogs and cats owned by Cobb County Animal Shelter, a rescue group, licensed rescue group, an animal care facility, or an animal rescue organization for the purpose of promoting public adoption of dogs and cats, provided the pet store, retail business, or other commercial establishment shall not have any ownership interest in the dogs and cats offered for adoption, and shall not receive a fee for, for providing space for the adoption of any such dogs and cats." Paragraph C, "Any pet store there is currently engaged in the business of selling, delivering, offering for sale, bartering, auctioning, giving away, or otherwise transferring of cats or dogs will have ninety days from the enactment of this ordinance to cease engaging in such activities." 10-135.1, violation and penalties. "A pet store that violates Section 10-135A shall be subject to a fine of $1,000 for each separate violation. Each dog or cat sold, delivered, offered for sale, bartered, auctioned, given away, adopted, or otherwise transferred, or disposed of in any violation of Section 10-135A shall constitute a separate violation." That's all for animals.
Okay. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Now Bill.
The Fire Marshal.
Okay, the next item that we have tonight is an amendment to Chapter 18, Building Regulations. This is a pretty simple amendment. As you know, the State Department of Community Affairs regularly, about every six years, adopts new building codes. And as part of that, we in turn adopt those codes. So this is moving forward with adoption of the 2018 building codes.
Chapter 54?
J, here it goes.
There he is.
Good evening, Commissioners. We have two proposals for additions to Chapter 54. The first is a section that allows the Fire Marshal's office to use more discretion with the adopted codes in determining occupant loads in existing buildings, and allows them to lower the occupant loads in those areas. We are working with the proposing commissioner on that, since there were new codes adopted effective January 1st by the state, which are, are in turn, just like the building code adopted here in Cobb, which do affect this. So we think that the need for this is lessened, but we're pulling some information together to work with the proposing commissioner on that one. The second proposal is for the establishment of an appeals board for fire code issues where someone may feel that the fire code's not being enforced correctly. And we are working with the proposing commissioner on this one as well, to establish the personnel who will fill that board, and we want to match the process. The Building Department already has a process in place for an appeals board. We have not had that process previously, so we're working to match that process so it is more clear to the public. And those are the only two proposals for Chapter 54 tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item this evening is Chapter 66, Historic Preservation. The amendments to the Historic Preservation District, to that ordinance, are really intended to provide some clarity. So starting with Chapter, Section 66-1 definitions, under the current code, there's reference to structure, however, there is not a definition for building. So as proposed, this would provide a definition for both building and structure, a building being a, a structure that's used for human, you know, activity. So a number of the amendments in this code work that building language into the existing code. So that's Section 66-57, also 58. Both of those incorporate building into those sections. 66-59 pertains to public notice requirements for designation of historic districts. Currently, the code requires that notice be given no less than ten days and no more than thirty days prior to the hearing. Now then, we're going to change that to no less than fifteen days and no more than forty-five days prior to the public hearing. This brings it in line with our requirements for zoning and those notification requirements. Again, in 66-81, we're adding building to the language that's already there. 66-82 and 66-83, here we're clarifying the standards that are going to be used to determine whether or not a certificate of appropriateness should be issued. Currently, the, the standards that are in there are pretty subjective, so here we're making it very clear that they're going to be judged against any design guidelines that the county has adopted for that particular district, as well as the Secretary of the Interior's requirements. And then finally, 66-85, under the current code, the Historic Preservation Commission can either approve or deny a certificate of appropriateness. We're expanding that so that they can approve the certificate as proposed. They can approve it with modifications or stipulations, and this gives them an opportunity to really make sure that the approval is appropriate to the area, to the, the historic district. And also, currently, the code says that it's going to consider relationship of the, the property to the surrounding neighborhood. Again, sort of subjective, so it's going to clarify that we're going to consider the proposal in relation to the other properties in the historic district. Again, glad to answer any questions. All right, the next one, Chapter 78. Again, this is a pretty simple cleanup item. Last year, the State General Assembly adopted some new language with regard to health spas. So the proposals here are all to reflect the language in the state code. It's really no material change to our code and our requirements, but just brings it into line with the state code.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. Parks has several proposals tonight, some changes, some additions to the code for Chapter 90. Section 90-1, one of the big things there is just the change of the, the name. Parks is actually on through two name changes, since the code was previously written. Actually talks about the Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs Department. We actually went, another name change, went Parks with periods, and then we took the periods out, so it's just Parks now. So this is just a name change. There'll be several of these sections that'll change with the name. Going to 90-52, the hours of operation, it's updated to change the designation of Parks to VOC responsibility. Back when the code was written, the Advisory Board, the Recreation Board, was a little less advisory, a little bit more of a legal policymaking board. Now it's, because of the county manager form of government, we're back now to a little bit less of a, of policymaking board, a little bit more of an advisory board. Very important board, but they're in advisory in nature, advisory through the Board of Commissioners. So we're making that change. Also updated the name in the section. Section 90-54 is the ejection of persons causing disturbances or violating law. The original code called for any person that was ejected or barred or suspended from a park or facility could only be suspended for 24 hours. We feel that this is a, a little bit, a little bit tough to do when you've got heated, things that happen in our parks, and a lot of times, 24 hours is not really enough to get that all cooled down. So we're actually looking at that, and the ability to bar or suspend persons from parks for an extended period of time. 90-55 is commercial activity. It's updated to allow the Parks Director to approve commercial activity in the park through the Board of Commissioners with the Board of Commissioners' approval. 90-56 is swimming, bathing, and wading. Again, updated to remove the Recreation Board as the supervisor over the bodies of order. Again, this was from back in the 60s or 70s when the code was originally written, and we changed the supervision of bodies of order under Parks Control to the Director. 90-58 is golfing regulated. This simply states that you cannot practice, play golf in the outfield of any of our athletic fields. This can cause damage, and it's a safety issue. We also have several golf courses around the county, but you can imagine the, the damage that can be done in an outfield with golf. Going on 90-59 is the damaging or removal of any park property or vegetation. Simply states it's unlawful to face, vandalize, or graffiti, harm, or damage park properties, buildings, facilities. It is also unlawful to dig up, damage, or remove any trees, shrubberies, flowers, landscaping items, et cetera, in parks and recreation facilities without the approval of the Board of Commissioners in conjunctions with the Parks Director. One of the things here is, we'll work with our friends groups to make sure that they're all in compliance, but we're, we're not really focusing on a friends group. We're focusing on the one or two people that just want to go out to a park and take something that's not rightfully theirs, that actually belongs to the public. You'd be amazed how many times that actually does happen, so we're changing that. Section 90-60 is the closure of recreation areas, and Section 90-61 failed to obey officially posted signs. Again, just a name change for both of those. Section 90-62 is violations in enforcement. We worked with our Cobb PD Rangers Unit, actually changes the first violation from $35 to $100, and changes the second or multiple violations from $100 to $250. Again, back when the code was written, $35 and $100 are a little, a little less important. You can imagine how many people will take advantage of that, so we're just changing that. Section 90-63 is restricted or prohibited use of park facilities, and there's several subsections under 90-63. A is pyrotechnics. It is unlawful to display, use, set off, or ignite firecrackers, fireworks, et cetera, other pyrotechnics in parks. We actually had a pretty costly building that burned down three years ago due to fireworks in a park. Cost us several hundred thousand dollars due to that. So again, this is just putting it in the, in the ordinance. Going on 90-63, to B, is animals restricted. Gives five definitions of it. Should be the duty of every animal owner or custodian of such animal to have physical control of the animal by leash or lead line. And this is where we, we talked about it last night. We actually had six, and we talked about changing it to 10 to make it mirror Chapter, Chapter 10. So we'll be changing that to 10 feet on, on the leash or lead line. Going on to, to, excuse me, to number two, talking about other service, other than service animals is necessary, or unless authorized by permit, should be unlawful for any person with a domestic animal to access areas of a park or recreation facility which are restricted to such animals. 90-63B3, it shall be the duty of every animal owner or custodian of such animal in a park or recreation facility to have in his or possession proof of current rabies vaccination for the animal. Section 4, it shall be the duty of every animal owner to immediately remove such animal from the park or recreation facility upon such animal exhibiting aggressive behavior, and et cetera. It goes on about how an animal can act. Then you go into Chapter, excuse me, Section 5, it shall be the duty of every animal owner or custodian in a park or recreation facility to immediately dispose of solid waste deposited by the animal, except for horses on designated equestrian trails. We move on to Section, to Section C, but again, the code was written years before dog parks were a thing. So this talks about the actual dog park and how dogs are to be used in a, given in a dog park. Actually, we call them off-leash areas. Goes into one, no owner or custodian of a dangerous fish or a guard protection canine is defined in Section 10-10 of Animal Cottor Order. It shall permit the canine to be in an off-leash area at any time. Number two, no person shall allow an animal other than a canine to enter or remain in an area that has been designated as an off-leash area. The owner or custodian of a canine in an off-leash area shall ensure that such dog is under control at all times. An animal control officer or other officer empowered to act by law may order that a canine be put on a leash and/or order that a canine be removed from an off-leash area at any time. Moving on, 90-63, in D, discharging of firearms in parks. It shall be unlawful for any person to discharge a firearm in any park or recreation facility. And as of our Board of Commissioners' work session yesterday, we'll be working with law enforcement to come up with something to go on the end of that, to make it to, to be where duly sworn law enforcement officers don't get, don't get caught with if they have to discharge their firearm in a park or recreation facility. E, camping prohibited. Again, goes strictly looking at where we are allowed or not allowed to camp inside of our parks. F, use of detection devices, goes on about metal detecting and things. You would be amazed at how many people think they've found lost treasure, and they find irrigation valves and everything else, and they dig it up, and that causes a lot of damage. So we, we try to, we try to unfortunately have to stop some things. G is improper personal conduct prohibited. It just gives us a little bit more of some teeth in the, the ordinance of improper personal conduct in our parks and our recreation facilities. H is the use or possession of controlled substances prohibited in our parks and recreation facilities. And I is actually talking about, again, something new since the codes were written, which is e-bikes, electronic bikes on our trails. We are looking at the possible, excuse me, there are three types of e-bikes, class one, class two, and class three. Class one is the lowest level. It's actually the pedal assisted. Class two and class three actually have the throttle or throttle-actuated motor- Class two and class three actually have the throttle or throttle-actuated motor. We're actually looking at class one being permitted on our trails, but class two and class three would not be permitted on our trails, especially when we talk about Silver Comet Trail, Bob Callan, Noonday Creek, trails like that. Finally, on the last section, ninety sixty-six, driving vehicles on roadways and speed limit, this is simply a name change as we talked about before, same as ninety sixty-seven, parking of vehicles generally. Ninety sixty-eight is prohibited during closed hours, we actually updated the times in the code. It was originally twelve to seven, it did not match up with another section of the code earlier in the, I think it was ninety fifty-two, so we had to change that to make it mirror. And then we also added language for sunset to sunrise parking in our passive parks. And then we added a severability clause inside of the code, it simply states that if someone challenges or tries to void or call it unlawful for another code section inside of chapter ninety, that it does not completely void the entire chapter, just that one section. So those are the ones that we have proposed for Parks.
Okay, the final bunch of code amendments are for the zoning ordinance, and we do have a number of those, again, some of them are cleanup items, some of them are a little bit more extensive. Please tell me to slow down if I need to. And these, the code amendments for the zoning ordinance have been, they were presented to the Planning Commission at their January seventh meeting, so I will, I will give you an update as far as what the Planning Commission's recommendation was on each of those. The First Amendment is to Division One of Article Two. Currently, the code requires a temporary land use permit to be issued in order for someone on less than eighty thousand square feet to have backyard chickens. We are proposing to remove the requirement for the temporary land use permit, and those would be allowed by right under new language in Article Five, and we'll cover that in a moment. The Planning Commission did recommend denial of this amendment. The next one is a cleanup item. As you all will recall, we spent several months last year working on the special land use permit for purpose-built student housing. Through all of those iterations and revisions to that code, we had a rendering, the one with the big red slash through it, was put into the code but does not actually reflect the language in the code, so we're proposing to replace that rendering with a new illustration that reflects the fifty-foot buffer and thirty-foot landscape buffer between the existing single-family residences and purpose-built student housing. The next piece, this is a new one, and this is one that is still, we're still working on refining it along with Commissioner Gambrell, but essentially what this is, is a special land use permit for limited impact professional services, and basically, this would allow for reuse of an existing single-family detached dwelling for some low-intensity commercial uses. This would be able to be on residentially zoned property as proposed. There are several criteria that would need to be met. First of all, you would have to reuse the existing house, you couldn't disturb the land outside of the property to the extent that an LDP would be required, so no major site work there. All site architectural landscapes, signage, and lighting plans would be approved by the Board of Commissioners along with the hours and days of operation. It would be approved for a very specific use, and then the Board has the purview to approve it either with a timeframe or without. Again, this is one that we're still looking at and continuing to refine, we want to be sure that the code that's brought forward is going to be one that's going to be appropriate for neighborhoods and also one that's going to be beneficial for the small businesses that it's intended to serve. The next item is Division Five, Property Maintenance. Currently, there is a section there pertaining to gutters and shutters, we are adding language there that would require that gutters and shutters be kept free from obstruction. Often what happens is those gutters are not regularly cleaned out, you might have two-foot-tall pine trees growing in them, and that can cause some significant deterioration on some of the structural elements of the home. Another part of that is exterior building surface maintenance. Again, you know, we get a number of calls in code enforcement, and I'm sure that some of you hear from some of your constituents of homes that have fallen into disrepair, but they're not quite to the point that it's a nuisance abatement case, so this would give us a tool to work with some of those homeowners who are not maintaining their home as they should, keeping the doors, windows, trim, porches, decks. The Planning Commission also recommended adding roofs in there, maintained and good working function. The next one is a pretty simple amendment, again, this is to add neighbor, to the neighborhood retail commercial district, thrift store, or secondhand store, and as we discussed at the work session yesterday, there was some recommendation to replace the secondhand store language with consignment store. The next item is traffic and parking. This proposal would allow for gravel parking in our districts on lots that are greater than five acres that are used for agricultural, equestrian, and other farm-type uses, and this would be allowed with a twenty-five-foot-long paved apron to the public road in order to mitigate some of the gravel and what have you, that might come off the tires. This is another one that the Planning Commission reviewed. On this one, this particular one, they suggested that we remove the requirement that it be for agricultural, equestrian, or other farm-type uses, and that it would be applicable to any lot in the R District thus greater than five acres. And we had a lot of discussion about this yesterday, and we'll continue to work with the Commissioners on some revisions to that language. The next item, Ableton Parkway Veterans Memorial Highway Design Overlay District, as you all know, the overlay district was codified. When that district was codified, the applicability standards didn't come over from the design guidelines, so at this point, what we're doing is just to bring that language into the code to really clarify at what point a property has to adhere to the overlay district guidelines. So that's, that's what this is, another sort of cleanup item. We're back to chickens, backyard chickens. As we discussed before, we are proposing to remove the requirement for the temporary land use permit and to make it allowable by right. The criteria for that is if a property is under eighty thousand square feet, you would be permitted to have one hen per five thousand square feet lot. They would have to be in a fenced area at the rear of your house. Any kind of coops or associated buildings would have to be located at least twenty-five feet from the adjacent property lines. There should be no nuisance caused by the chickens, no slaughter on sight, and also very clearly that this should not, this in no way gives someone the authorization or the right to violate any of their HOA or neighborhood rules or covenants. And then finally, the most probably significant change to the zoning code that we're proposing is to incorporate a code for short-term rentals. Currently, we don't really have a mechanism to, to address issues that come up with short-term rentals, so we're proposing this section, the first is to set a definition for short-term rental, which would be a rental that does not exceed thirty consecutive days. We are requiring that if someone come in to have a short-term rental on their property, they would have to designate a short-term rental agent, and that would someone who, would be someone who's a local contact that could respond to the property in very quick order if there are any problems, and that would be someone who the county would have access to, as well as the neighbors would also have their contact information. With the short-term rental ordinance, what we're proposing is that these short-term rentals would all have to come in and get an occupational tax certificate, so a business license for each, each location. Standard conditions that would be required, of course, they would have to be in keeping with all county codes pertaining to off-street parking. We discussed initially no more than two adults per bedroom plus three additional per short-term rental property. The Planning Commission had a lot of discussion about this, and has really given us a lot of good feedback since we had our meeting back in January. When we had the meeting in January, they did recommend to hold this one, and so we've worked on a draft and revised it, actually sent it to them yesterday at the Planning Commission's work session. So this will be coming back to the Planning Commission next week at their meeting on the fifth, and at that point, hopefully, we'll have a recommendation to move forward to you, but I just want you all to know that this is one of the items that will likely be changed when you see this again on the eleventh. Again, occupational tax certificate would be required, as well as all hotel motel taxes, tourism fees, and other state and local fees that are related to lodging, all of those would be required for short-term rentals. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you.
All right, with that, now declare this public hearing open to address the proposed code amendments. Remember, you all have three minutes, and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna strictly enforce the three minutes, all right? We've got a lot of people who want to talk tonight, so let's be conscious of that. Please let us know who you are and where you live, and with that, the first speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dana Johnson, Cobb Chamber of Commerce, Livingston, Cobb. Here to speak on two particular amendments, chapter fifty-four, I want to thank the Board for considering the changes to chapter fifty-four. We think this is a perfect marriage between safety and ensuring safety while also making sure economic development remains strong in Cobb County. This kind of puts us on a regional par as it relates to how we're handling some of our rules, rates to occupancy, and other levels, other items like that, so we think this is a very positive change that keeps safety as a priority, but also allows us to better compete from an economic development perspective. On chapter one thirty-four, I want to speak in regard to the Limited Impact Professional Services Ordinance, and I think this is really, this is a really great concept that can have a very strong positive impact for small businesses across Cobb County, particularly, I think it's restricted to our shared quarters, which is appropriate. There are a couple of things I think should be considered in the process of doing this. When you think about, when you take a residential structure and you turn it into a commercial structure, there's usually some interior work that you have to do into it in order to make sure the use changes under the codes of the county and of the state. That will sometimes require a lending institution to lend money to do that. If the Board creates a scenario with limited uses and limited timeframes, it's going to be highly unlikely that a bank would provide the funding necessary to actually make the improvements into the home. So what we are asking the Board to consider would be to remove subsections G and H of that particular code, and instead, create a list of very specific uses that would be authorized and appropriate in a transitional use like this, which will have very low impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. That kind of gives the lending institutions the assurance that this is something that's actually allowed for the small business owner, they won't go ahead and spend tens to hundreds of thousands of dollars to study things, only for it not to get approved, which is, for a small business owner, that's, that's a lot on your business when you're trying to really make it happen. And those really are comments, we think this is a great attempt. Oh, sorry, one more thing. Under the fifty-five thousand square feet of impervious surface, we just want to make sure that will be enough space to handle all of the parking that's required under the zoning code as it relates to that, to the, to the size of it, and there's no, in my version, I didn't have page numbers, so I apologize that I'm not referring to a specific page number, but that, that five thousand square feet might be a limiting factor, particularly if the zoning code is going to require larger parking ratios, so you might want to look at that number to see if five thousand square feet would be enough to ensure that, that you're not going to basically automatically cause them to go into a variant scenario before they even are able to do any business there. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Pat Burns, I live at ten Concord Road, Smyrna, Georgia. New preservation codes have been written that appear to accommodate an incompatible structure to be inserted in the Covered Bridge Historic District. That is not the Cobb County Way. The Cobb County Way was demonstrated by this, by the C dot, asking us to, to come to the table to compromise following decades of road threats which have, which would have damaged the district. I believe if we sit down with community development preservation planners, compromises can be reached. Therefore, all proposed code changes affecting to the district should be voted down until we've had some dialogue. But why are we, but why were we not invited to the table to work out preservation plan if it needed clarification? Remember, nowhere else does a historic district like this exist, nowhere. You can actively help protect it by keeping immediate neighborhoods in Code sixty-six dot eighty-five. Drawing a line through immediate neighborhoods strikes a blow at the heart of the district and all the preservation efforts that you have helped us with. It strikes a blow to young soldiers who fought and died there. It strikes a blow to the memory of the slaves who were freed there. It strikes a blow to the residents who have maintained the immediate neighborhood and complied with the county's preservation rules. It strikes a blow at the integrity of the Historic Preservation Planner and Committee itself. Desecrating the district by passing these codes before meaningful dialogue appears premature and shortsighted. I was asked, what do I want? I want four things. I want dialogue, dialogue before the code changes are considered, and a compromisable dialogue. I want support, support at the table from the county's preservation people and the community development, support as vigorous as they appear to have for the developers. Three, I want compatibility. Compatibility is the buzzword for new infill construction in historic Charleston, Denver, Atlanta, and elsewhere. And number four, for now, I want you all to vote against these proposed preservation codes.
Hey, my name is Philip Ivester, and I live on Concord Road also, and I appreciate your comments, Pat. Thank y'all for the opportunity to speak tonight, I just wanted to be, make a brief comment. I appreciate the intent to clarify some of this code, and that's something we'd like to do as well, but I wanted to bring your attention to section eighty-two where we're revising the code to change the guideline for rehabilitation and the guideline for new construction. As you know, there's, there's two primary activities of the Historic Preservation Commission, one is to regulate renovations to historic structures, the other is to regulate new construction, and this change would make the guideline for new construction that we adopt to be the Secretary of Interior's Guidelines for Rehabilitation. And I'm here tonight because I think that would be a mistake. The Guidelines for Rehabilitation from the Secretary of Interior standards were not intended for new construction, they don't make any sense when applied to new construction, and I would appreciate it if you would just take a look at those before we adopt them for new construction. Some of the things they say are deteriorated historic features shall be repaired rather than replaced. Replacement of missing features shall be substantiated by documented physical or pictorial evidence. Chemical, physical treatments such as sandblasting that cause damage to historic materials shall not be used. These don't make any sense to new construction. The way the code is currently written in section eighty-two, sixty-six dash eighty-two, is the Historic Preservation Commission should adopt guidelines for new construction, and that's what we should be using. Obviously, we don't have those guidelines for new construction, but the solution is to get the Historic Preservation Commission to, to adopt their own guidelines. I've got a lot of examples of those, just about every historic preservation group around the country has guidelines for new construction and guidelines for rehabilitation. Sometimes they're in the same document, Part A and Part B, but we should, we should do that for these historic districts, we should have guidelines for new construction and not adopt incompatible rehabilitation guidelines and try to apply them to new construction. That's only going to make things more confusing for our commission. A lot of commissions have tried to do that and created confusion and damage to the district. Let's learn from their mistakes and not invite these problems into Cobb County in 2020. Thank you for your time tonight.
My name is Robert Roach, and I live at ten Concord Road, Southwest Smyrna, Georgia, in what is called the Miller's House with the rough's gristmill in our front yard adjacent to the Concord Covered Bridge. Thank you for the opportunity to address you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My request is that the second sentence of section sixty-six eighty-five of the official code of Cobb County not be amended, and in particular, the phrase "in the immediate neighborhood" be maintained. That sentence, as it currently reads, is carefully phrased word for word to the State of Georgia Code forty-four dash ten dash twenty-eight, which reads, "In making this determination, namely approving a COA, the Commission shall consider, in addition to any other pertinent factors, the historical and architectural value and significance, architectural style, general design, arrangement, texture, and material of the architectural features involved, and the relationship thereof to the exterior architectural style and pertinent features of other structures in the immediate neighborhood." That code has been functioning effectively for forty years, since nineteen eighty, when the state adopted the Georgia Historic Preservation Act. Wisely, in nineteen eighty-four, Wisely, in 1984, when the Cobb County Historic Preservation System was established, that sentence from the state code was adopted verbatim, along with the nearly entire remainder of the state code. To allow such a change means that the amended Cobb code would disregard the guidance of the state code and would disregard the profound value of continuity and integrity of intact historic areas and permit random application of its COAs. It would mean that the State of Georgia Code would no longer supply uniformity of vision and provision for statewide code guidance and historic preservation. Thank you.
Mr. Roach, what was that code, Georgia code, again?
State code or Georgia?
The state code, yeah.
State code is 66 point 85.
The state code is 4410, the state code?
4410, 28.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Lynn Robinson. I was born and raised in Marietta in Cobb County, and I'm here to speak to you in support of section 10 dash 135, which is to prohibit the selling of puppies in retail pet stores. I want to speak in support of that because the puppies in pet stores primarily come out of horrific puppy mills. And while I want to speak and be a voice for all dogs, tonight I want to introduce you to one dog, which is my sister's dog Ricky. This is a terrible picture, but he's wearing a Santa Claus costume, and he's really cute. But the reason I want to talk to you about Ricky is because Ricky was a breeding dog in a puppy mill in South Georgia. He was dumped by his breeder once he had no further use. He was deaf from untreated ear infections. He was lame from living in a crate his entire life. He was matted. He was full of worms. He had given up all hope. Luckily, the breeder dumped him in a municipal animal shelter where he could receive care. Some of them kill them, they hang them, they electrocute them, they drown them, they bury them alive. It is horrific. But Ricky landed in a municipal animal shelter, so your tax dollars went to providing at least minimal care for him. Then he was taken by rescue, where people's charitable donations, which are pre-tax dollars, were used to provide care for him. And then he landed in the home of my sister, so he won the ownership lottery there, and he's living his best life. So not only do puppy mills cost us in tax dollars, they're also unsafe. The puppies coming out of these horrific puppy mills are not, they're sick, and they're making people sick, and it's a public health issue. But it's also a moral issue. I want to live in a community where cruelty is not condoned, and we stand up and say, we are not going to allow this cruelty in our community. I know that government would rather not legislate certain things, and they want market forces to handle situations like this, but market forces are not stopping puppy mills. Only our leadership can do that by voting to not allow puppy mill puppies or any puppies to be sold in these retail pet stores. I hope that you will step up to this leadership and not allow puppies to be sold in retail pet stores any longer so that this cruelty can be stopped. Thank you.
My name is Anna Rains, and I'm a representative of Best Friends Animal Society. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the proposed code revision supporting the Community Cat Program and outdoor community cats in Cobb County. Best Friends is a national animal welfare organization with a lifesaving center located here in Cobb County. Our mission is to increase the number of dogs and cats leaving shelters alive. With that mission in mind, we started the Cobb County Community Cat Program in partnership with Cobb County Animal Services in 2016. This program allows, I'm sorry, this program allows for outdoor cats to be sterilized and vaccinated instead of impounded. Additionally, we work with citizens having issues with the cats to humanely and effectively solve those issues. I wanted to share with you some of the data showing the impact of the Community Cat Program on Cobb County's feline save rate. That means the percentage of cats leaving the shelter alive. As you can see, the save rate increased from just 62% in 2015 to 93% in 2016 after the Community Cat Program was implemented. This past year, the average was 94% save rate for cats leaving Cobb County. This program has proven to be a success for Cobb County, and the next step is to allow it to continue to exist, to be a resource for the cats and the citizens of Cobb County by updating the ordinances to officially allow the program to continue. These programs work nationally, and they've worked for Cobb County. To respect your time and tonight's busy agenda, we've asked that supporters of these ordinance revisions raise their hands rather than signing up to speak tonight. So I'd like to ask all those in favor of the code revisions supporting the Community Cat Program to raise your hands now.
You want to count? Okay. All right. We're not, we're not going to take your, we're not going to count as good, but they want, the two of the commissioners want to head count, so.
Thank you for allowing us this platform to address these important and necessary changes and for your time tonight.
Okay. We need to get a head count here. Make sure you raise your hand too, okay? I just want to make sure about that.
Feel free to reach out to me, anyone with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll let you go in a second. Do you want us to do a count too while we got the hands up, or? Let's just check in here. I hope that that doesn't violate the, the fire marshal's ordinance here. Okay, ma'am, please.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, and neighbors. My name is Elizabeth Finch, and I am a resident of Cobb County. I also serve as the Vice President of the Good Muse Animal Foundation Board of Directors. I am here in support of the passage of the proposed ordinance amendment regarding community cats, chapter 10. More dogs enter municipal shelters, however more cats are killed. And yet, cat populations do not decrease without targeted trap, neuter, and return initiatives in place. Trap, neuter, return programs, better known as TNR, is the method proven time and time again as the most effective at combating and controlling the population of homeless cats. The passage of this ordinance allows for responsible and efficient management of county resources. This will permit feral cats to be sterilized, vaccinated, and afforded the opportunity to live as opposed to facing certain death, all at no cost to the county. Not only does this save lives and county resources, it also attacks the core issue of the overpopulation in a responsible, humane, and effective manner. By allowing feral cats through this program, Cobb County is able to shift more of their focus and resources onto those animals who are truly in need of their services. Those lost and displaced from their homes, with heartbroken owners in search of them. Animals who are surrendered, who have never known life outside of a home, and those who find themselves in the care of animal services under unknown conditions who deserve every chance of rescue. We are all aware that open admission shelters must make hard decisions when faced with limited cage space. This ordinance amendment clearly gives all animals a better chance. It's physically responsible, humane, and the right thing to do. These animals depend on us, and they are depending upon your decision in this manner. Please give them every opportunity possible to live. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dr. Debbie Robb from Smyrna, Georgia. I'm here representing the dog competition people, and I have, I submit to you an idea for Cobb County. We're the people that run in agility, do herding, cross-country, biathlons, lure coursing, nose work, shutzin', all the people that work and run with their dogs. I apologize for my wear. This is spring training for us agility people, and I ran and sweat, but my dogs did get the weave pole entries. I had 60 other people coming because we would like Cobb County to be the dog competition county in America. We are hosting the National Australian Shepherd Championships in October. There will be 4,000 dogs in October. They will be, unfortunately, at Conyers. We would like to host those sorts of events in Cobb County. They will last 11 days. There'll probably be about 15,000 to 20,000 people staying. We spend about $400 a day. I'm a hospitality professor at Georgia State University. I understand tourism dollars. We would like to see some of the areas, we don't want to go to Will's Park anymore, and we don't want to go out to Conyers, and we don't want to go to Perry. We want to stay in Cobb. We have better hotels, we have better access to restaurants, we have better access to airports to bring the judges in. We will have a lot of people here, and unfortunately, we'll be in Conyers. But any legislations or code enforcements that you put up, if the language in competitions, we are all off-leash because the dogs, if they don't want to compete, they can't compete. They will walk off as my dogs do sometimes, right? But sometimes they're more than 20 feet from us, especially on a herding and an outrun lift and fetch. So if you're doing shows, I would like to see any code enforcement for off-leash say something that it has to be sanctioned by an approved association, and it has to be within the rules and guidelines of said sport. So then the canine cross and agility and that sort of thing, because at the end of our sprints, my dog is more than 20 feet from me for us to win. And I, I'm really proud of Cobb County. This is my first meeting ever. I'm very proud of you. Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you. Dr. Robb, would you leave your information with the young lady right there so we can get a hold of you?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioners. Thank you very much for your, your time tonight. My name is Dr. Lori Trahan, and I am here to speak in favor of the humane pet ordinance. The primary focus of a pet store that sells dogs and cats is profit. Some stores even offer commission to employees that sell more dogs and cats in any condition, sick or not. They rely heavily on impulse buying practices and even manipulate customers into purchases by using predatory lending practices and credit agreements with interest rates as high as 29%. Clark Howard's team did an expose on these practices. 11 Alive in December of 2018 did a story on a puppy named Akila. The family spent $5,600 on Akila. She came home coughing with green stuff coming out of her nose. Over $1,000 later, the puppy died. They are still paying off that puppy. Further, Petland utilizes the extremely controversial practice of non-disclosure agreements to silence their consumers. If a consumer purchases a sick animal and asks the store to pay for the vet bills, or if they ask for a refund after a pet dies due to illness it had at the time of purchase, the consumer has to sign a non-disclosure agreement agreeing not to post any negative comments to social media or consumer protection websites, and they cannot contact the Attorney General about their experience. Consumers must agree to this if they want compensation for their vet bills or for the animal that died. To boost sales, employees will also offer baseless claims about the breeders that they source from, often lying to consumers because they know full well that sourcing from puppy mills is socially unacceptable. In contrast, the primary focus of a humane model is the well-being of the dog or cat and placement in the right home. The cost of adopting is less expensive because it's not-for-profit, it's not-profit focused, and therefore, no financial assistance or lending is needed, so no predatory lending schemes or promotion of unfair business practices can be had. And as somebody who has worked a puppy mill situation up in Cherokee County just a few years ago, the dogs are begging you to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Megan Boyd. I'm a lawyer here in Georgia and a law professor at Georgia State. I teach and write in the areas of civil procedure, animal law, and legal writing. I travel all over the country, teaching lawyers how to parse legal language and statutory language, and I'm here tonight to support the passage of that 10 dash 135, which is the ban on retail pet stores in Cobb County. Importantly though, I'm actually a Cobb County resident, and for all the reasons that the folks before me stated, these are also the reasons why I support this retail sale ban here in Cobb County, both the humane issues, the animal welfare issues, but also the commercial issues that arise when people buy animals from a pet store but don't know what they're actually getting. I am here, though, to specifically speak about an issue that I believe has come up with the potential for 10 dash 135 to conflict with some provisions of the Georgia Constitution and the Georgia Statewide Animal Protection Act. And I want to tell you that it is my opinion, after reading the proposed language of the statute, as well as the, the Constitution and the Animal Protection Act, that this particular ordinance would not conflict with the act. I believe that this has arisen because in December of 2009, the Attorney General of Georgia provided an opinion to someone who requested it about a Canton ordinance that was designed to do something similar to this ordinance that's being proposed in Cobb County. And I want to say first of all that the Canton ordinance, the language is different than the language of this proposed ordinance, and so for that reason, I'm not sure we can take a lot of stock in what it says. But number two, and with all due respect to the Attorney General and his office, I think that their legal opinion is wrong, and I want to explain to you why. The legal opinion is based on this idea that preemption applies when a local ordinance conflicts with a state statute that does allow localities to regulate in that area, and that's what's happened here. We have the Animal Protection Act in Georgia, but it specifically allows for localities to legislate and regulate in the area of animal protection. In this case, there is a lot of Georgia case law on what an implied conflict is. None of that is mentioned in the AG's report, opinion letter, which is one of the reasons why I think it's suspect, because an actual conflict exists when a local law prevents or frustrates the accomplishment of a state objective, or when it's impossible to, for parties to comply with both of the laws, the state law and the local law. Neither of those things would happen here. Here, this law does not impose any requirements on pet retailers above those required on the Animal Protection Act. It doesn't conflict with the statewide Animal Protection Act. It doesn't make pet stores jump through hoops to get additional requirements specific to Cobb County. It just simply says that you cannot sell in Cobb County, and that is allowed. The localities can pass those types of regulations under Georgia law.
Ma'am, I'm, I'm sorry that you're out of time.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Stillwell. I am a resident of Atlanta. I'm obviously from another country, from England, but I have been a citizen of the United States since 2005 and lived in Atlanta for 11 years. I am a dog behavior expert, and I've also assisted on many seizures here in Georgia, puppy mill seizures, one in Cherokee County, one in Habasham County, and one in Montgomery and Candley Counties. I also, because of my job, see a lot of dogs, and because of my behavior expertise, I see a lot of compromised dogs, especially dogs that suffer with anxiety, with phobias... a lot of compromised dogs, especially dogs that suffer with anxiety, with phobias, and most notably, with aggression issues. And a lot of the clients that I see, and a lot of the experience that I've had, are with pups that have come from puppy mills and been sold via pet stores or backyard breeders. And that's why I'm supporting the retail ban on the sale of puppies, because it's not just, obviously, a moral and ethical issue, it's one issue of public health and safety. I am blessed to have a rather large media platform and for the work I do, which is a lot on television and in different countries. And so my last book is The Ultimate Guide to Raising a Puppy, which came out in October. And I want to just read you a paragraph from it. This is, "A study published in the Journal of American Veterinary Medicine in 2013 shows that puppies purchased from puppy farms show an increased prevalence for behavioral problems as adults." The study, and this was a study done of 5,000 dogs, motivated by findings in a 2011 study by the same authors, shows that adult dogs rescued from commercial breeding facilities tend to have more psychological problems than pet dogs raised in enriching home environments, and suggests that turbulent early lives of dogs in commercial breeding facilities might be the reason for future stress-related behaviors. The extent of the abnormalities in dogs sourced from large-scale breeders is dramatic. Pups from puppy farms show an increased risk of aggression towards their owners and other dogs, as well as a greater chance of escaping, roaming, and running away. They're more likely to be fearful, anxious, and depressed, and are less able to cope with challenges and novelty in domestic life. The 2011 study was the first scientific evidence that dogs confined in puppy mills for breeding purposes demonstrated impaired mental health. I also do a lot of dog bite prevention work, not just here in the U.S., but around the world. And we see a lot of children especially getting bitten by compromised dogs. This is why this is more than just a whole group of what we're called animal advocates coming here. You can see how passionate people are, coming here and saying, please, just let's be kind to our dogs and cats. This is safety. This is safety for our communities. This is safety for our children. This is safety for our families. And that's why I'm asking you to consider a ban on the retail sales of puppies in Cobb County. Thank you very much.
If you give them to the clerk. There you go.
I have a book for all of you. It's not a gift, it's just education material.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for your time. My name is Adam Russell. I live in Marietta, District One. Also, we can't thank you enough for your willingness to consider amending the county code 10-135 to prohibit the sale of dogs and cats in pet stores. I, along with many other constituents, believe that passing these code changes will benefit the county by doing the following. One, allowing our county to take a stand against puppy mill cruelty. Two, protecting consumers from a deceptive pet store sales model that can result in a sick or behaviorally challenged dog, which treatment could cost thousands of dollars in vet bills. Three, protecting consumers from public health risks related to sick animals obtained from pet stores. Four, shifting the market towards humane sources such as cruelty, I'm sorry, such as animal control, shelters, rescues, and responsible breeders who sell directly to the public. If I could, have everyone who supports these code changes to prohibit the sale of dogs and cats, please raise their hand or sign. That's a lot of people. And lastly, can we get a count? Thank you. Oh, and by saying Martin Luther King, a man who is much more wise than I am, the time is always right, to do it is right, and that time is now. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman Boyce. Good to see you again. My name is Jennifer Mays. I live in Marietta in District One. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for considering the code changes to prohibit the sale of cats and dogs in pet stores. A more humane model that doesn't allow selling cats and dogs is beneficial not only for the animals, but also for the constituents of Cobb County. And one of the biggest reasons is consumer protection. Yeah, I've screwed up the slideshow. There we go. Consumer protection is one of the biggest reasons. As you've heard already, pet store puppies are primarily sourced from commercial breeding facilities, known as puppy mills, and puppy mills are unquestionably linked to animal suffering and consumer deceit. It's well documented that puppy mills subject their dogs to deplorable conditions, including small stacked cages, minimal exposure to sunlight and grass, lack of adequate food, water, and vet care. These conditions often compromise the health and behavior of the pets, which in turn leads to exorbitant financial and emotional costs to the consumer. Buyers have reported paying excessive vet bills trying to treat animals sold in pet stores, and in many cases, the puppies still die. These are just some pictures of typical pet mill conditions, and the poor animals that live in them. However, let's contrast that with a humane model. Since the animals are not mass-produced, they're not viewed as a product, and profit isn't the only motive, the health and the well-being of the animals is actually prioritized with proper vet care and socialization. The animal may be initially cared for in a foster home environment, so the behavior and health of the animal can be understood, and any concerns can be addressed before they're adopted. It promotes transparency and helps match the right pet with the right person. These points of a humane model also apply to responsible breeders. It's a common provision in bylaws of multiple dog breed clubs that breeders must agree to never sell their pets or their puppies to pet stores. Good, responsible breeders in our county should not get looped in with these puppy mills. And finally, these changes would not affect a consumer's ability to obtain a dog or cat of his choice, directly from either a breed-specific rescue, or, as mentioned before, a responsible breeder, where they can actually directly interact with the breeder to see the conditions in which the dogs or cats are raised. Thank you again for your consideration. We really appreciate it.
I'd like to thank you for listening to us tonight. Might be a slightly long evening. My name is Scott Denton. I've been a Cobb County resident for 25 years and a business owner here for 15 years and a proud Kennesaw State graduate. So, how's a humane model beneficial for a pet store business? A humane pet ordinance is not anti-business. In fact, it helps businesses engage in an increasingly lucrative pet retail market. Pet stores do not need to sell puppies to turn a profit. The pet industry is a booming business. According to the American Pet Products Association, Americans spent $72 billion on their pets in 2018 in every category, including pet foods, products, and services. Every category saw an increase except live animal sales, which they predict will continue to decline. Any pet store in Cobb County would be wise to follow a humane model to tap into this lucrative retail market. Further, per the World Pet Association Retail Operating Performance Report of 2018, pet stores with animals reported $246 total revenue per square foot, while pet stores that sell only dry goods reported $403 per square foot. Pet stores in Georgia, and right here in Cobb County, have proven they can thrive using a humane business model that focuses on offering quality products and services and hosting adoption events. Some examples include Petco, PetSmart, and Wolfgang Bakery. PetSmart and Petco, the two most successful pet store chains in the country, do not sell puppies and kittens. Rather, they partner with local shelters and rescues to host adoption events at their store. PetSmart boasts that through this model, they save over 1,300 pets every day. A smaller chain, Wolfgang Bakery, has seven stores in Georgia, 110 nationwide and growing. It is the seventh-largest pet supply retailer in the United States. They have never sold puppies in their store and pledged to never do so. Quote, "The Wolfgang Bakery Company adamantly opposes the archaic and abhorrent practice of puppy mill breeding and selling puppy mill dogs. Good pet stores do not sell puppies, and responsible pet breeders do not sell to stores." The community and their customers love the collaborative relationship between the stores and shelters and rescues. And because they have a positive experience with the store, they will continue to come back for future purchases. It is also important to note that conscientious companies are refusing to do business with pet stores that sell puppies. For instance, Honest Kitchen, a healthy pet food company with products in nearly 5,000 stores across the country, regularly turns down requests from customers that want to sell their products but also sell puppies. The association with commercial breeding facilities, puppy mills, can taint the image of the pet store. I'd like to thank the Commissioners for hearing us tonight. And final thought, I wish we would put protection over profits.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman. My name is Cindy Patton. I'm a lawyer and a proud graduate of KSU. For 35 years, I have lived and worked in District One of our great county. When there is so much debate and argument about an issue, one solution is to get back to the facts. Please consider this fact. Petland assures us that the puppies they sell are sourced from USDA-licensed and inspected breeders with no direct violations in the last 24 years. That sounds reassuring, and it's a great marketing ploy, but it shouldn't make anyone feel comfortable. Here's at least two reasons why. USDA standards of care are unacceptable, and the department does not enforce those standards. The USDA has only 120 inspectors who are charged with oversight of 12,000 commercial breeding facilities across the U.S. So what are these USDA standards of care that Petland houts? The USDA permits dogs to be confined in stacked wire cages just six inches longer and taller than the dog for its entire life. It permits up to 12 dogs, adult dogs, in one cage. The standards permit zero exercise and socialization outside of the cage. They permit extreme temperatures for up to four consecutive hours. They permit repeated breeding and unlimited litters. They permit no regular veterinary care beyond an annual walkthrough of the facility. Now, I'm not suggesting that USDA standards are never exceeded by breeders. In fact, the responsible Georgia breeders that I have bought from for years would never sell puppies to Petland. However, I reject Petland's proposition that anyone, especially this board, should be reassured by their alleged compliance with USDA certifications or oversight. Second, the department cannot enforce its low standards. In 2010, the Office of Inspector General confirmed that the USDA's enforcement process was ineffective against problem dealers. Because violations are not properly documented, some larger breeders circumvent inspection requirements due to loopholes, and repeat violators operate unimpeded for years. These findings align with another report that found facilities cited by state officials for serious issues, such as emaciated dogs and dying puppies, concurrently had clean inspection reports from the USDA. Maybe that happens because in 2018, the department abandoned its policy of unannounced or surprise inspections, allowing facilities with active violations the time they need to cover them up. In summary, any reliance upon the efficacy of USDA licensing is just misplaced. Department standards should be recognized by this board for what they are, insufficient to reflect the morals, ideals, and values of Cobb County. We're so much better than that.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman Boyce. It's nice to see you all again. My name is Julie Escarsega. I have lived in Cobb County for 16 years. I live in District Three. I also work here for the local school system at Marietta City Schools. I appreciate you taking the time to hear us all tonight. I just want to talk briefly about how a humane model will benefit Cobb County overall. We want to look at community-focused efforts to address pet overpopulation. Like many other animal control facilities in the state, Cobb is crowded with pets. Shannon Luke, Division Director at Cobb County Animal Services, stated that the shelter saw about 8,600 animals pass through its doors last year. According to the Georgia Society for the Prevention to Cruelty to Animals, one of the key causes to pet overpopulation is commercial breeding, aka puppy mills. Unfortunately, pet stores are a preferred sales outlet for commercial breeders because they allow the cruelty at the mills to remain hidden from consumers. Abundant documentation shows that Georgia pet stores source puppies from commercial breeders around the country. According to the Georgia Department of Agriculture, thousands of healthy, friendly dogs are euthanized yearly due to an inadequate number of responsible homes to care for them. Stopping the influx of puppies from puppy mills and commercial breeders could reduce this number and lessen the financial burden on our government, because the task of housing and euthanizing the unwanted animals falls largely on the city and county shelters, which are funded by the taxpayers. Overpopulation continues to persist despite shelters and organizations actively working to decrease the number of homeless pets, with programs that include free spay-neuter clinics, free microchipping, and transfer of animals from areas of surplus to areas of short supply. When pet stores partner with local shelters to hold adoption events, many more homeless animals are adopted. It is only logical to pull dogs and cats from crowded, overburdened county and city shelters to help decrease pet euthanasia rates due to overcrowding. Other benefits include providing an opportunity to educate adopters about the importance of spaying and neutering, because usually no dogs or cats are adopted until they're spayed and neutered, and also encouraging future pet adoption by hopefully creating a positive experience for the adopter. My final slide shows two different cities where similar ordinances were passed, and the adoption rates actually increased at the local shelters. I want to thank you again for taking the time to hear us all tonight. We do appreciate it. I also wanted to express my support for the ordinance supporting the changes for community cats in Cobb County. Dogs and cats deserve better, and the consumers in Cobb County deserve better.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kendra Ledlow, and I live in Acworth, District One. I've been a resident of Cobb County for six years, and I currently work as the Shelter Manager at Goodmees Animal Foundation in Marietta. Prior to my current position, I worked at Cobb and Cherokee Emergency Veterinary Clinics for five years as a veterinary technician. In that time, I cared for dozens of animals purchased from Petland's Kennesaw location. It was so common to come in for a shift and see a sick puppy that the staff would turn to each other and ask from Petland, which would be answered with a sigh and a shake of the head. You may have heard of these situations on the news, however, my coworkers and I watched the suffering firsthand. I've seen puppies sitting in an oxygen cage struggling to breathe from severe pneumonia. These patients require around-the-clock care, along with nebulization, coupage, IV fluids, antibiotics, and pain meds. Most are so dependent on supplemental oxygen that they can't leave their cage to go outside for a bathroom break. Many are so congested with mucus dripping down their face that they can't smell their food and must be syringe-fed a meal to ensure adequate nutrition for survival. Other puppies were sick with parvovirus, campylobacter, giardia, or a combination of the three. All infect the gastrointestinal system, and the latter two are also contagious to humans. These dogs were so weak, they could not absorb any nutrition, as it immediately came out in violent diarrhea or vomiting despite medications. Such illnesses are easily spread in puppy mills and pet stores due to the proximity of housing, insufficient vaccination, and poor immune systems due to their stressful start to life. Sick puppies are then sold to unsuspecting people. Despite intensive care, most of these puppies were not strong enough to survive. You may think, why would anyone purchase an animal from a store with such a record? This very question was posed to owners time and time again in the ER. The common answer was that they truly felt they were helping the animal by getting them out of the store. The general public may not realize that they are perpetuating the process when buying these puppies. As they are purchased, more are bred at puppy mills, born into abhorrent conditions, and brought into the store where the cycle continues. The store owners see these animals as products rather than living sentient beings. In addition to these issues is the simple fact that the homeless pet population needs our help. There are hundreds of thousands of animals euthanized in shelters There are hundreds of thousands of animals euthanized in shelters each year. When you make the choice to adopt a cat or a dog from a shelter rather than purchasing in a pet store, you're saving two lives: the animal you adopted and the spot that you provide for the next homeless pet to wait for their adopter. Georgia even has an adoptable dog as our official state dog. I appreciate your consideration of the proposed code amendments for a humane pet acquisition practice. Likewise, please also note my support for those amendments pertaining to community cats. I think it's apparent your constituents prioritize animal welfare in Cobb County, and we hope you will do the same. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Chris Benson. I've been a resident of Cobb County for 50 years, since I was brought home from Piedmont Hospital here. And in that time, I have lived here nonstop in Districts One, Two, and Three. So I've been in most parts of the county at one point or another. I'm a senior executive at Lockheed Martin, which is one of the largest employers for the county. And as you know from the many times I've been before you, I'm a strong animal welfare advocate. I found it interesting that the Attorney General issued the opinion that he did, and I found out tonight that that originated from Agriculture Commissioner Gary Black. Now, the funny thing is, I spent a few hours with Gary Black on Friday discussing animal protection issues, and he failed to mention that to me, even though he knew I was a resident of Cobb County. And so I'm a little angry at Gary tonight, and I'm hoping he's watching this, because I know he's aware that this is going on. And the next time I see him in a few weeks, I'm going to ask him what the relationship, if any, he might have with Petland, to understand the motivation of him asking the Attorney General for this kind of opinion.
Excuse me. No, no, no. He is an elected official, and we show due respect to him, so you can keep your personal opinions yourself to regard to that.
I don't think I said anything negative.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did. You're out of line here.
Fair enough, Commissioner.
Your personal opinions about the Secretary, the Agriculture Secretary, are between you and him, not for this board to consider.
Understood. Do I get my time back for the time I lost just now?
I stopped.
Okay, thank you very much. Just wanted to make sure. So what I'm getting at here is, we can parade a number of attorneys in front of you that are specialists in animal law specifically, and know more about animal law than the Attorney General. And what I would ask you to do is look at the overall context of the situation we find ourselves in, and recognize it for what it is. And please, and Chairman, I thank you very much for being with us all the way through this, and I apologize for offending you a moment ago. But I would ask everybody to stand with us. We clearly have all of, you know, all these Cobb County citizens, more than we've ever had for one of these meetings in the last few years, that we've had these various issues here tonight in support of this. And so please be brave, please stand with us. You've done so much good over the last few years, and I hope you'll keep it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, good evening, Chairman, boys, and commissioners. Thank you so much for listening us tonight. We really do appreciate it. My name is Lisa Powell-Huberty, and I live in East Cobb District Two. And I've lived in the Atlanta area for over 20 years, and I've always lived in Cobb County. Thank you for your hard work and dedication to Cobb. I'm here to request that you adopt the code changes as written that support a humane model for all pet stores in Cobb County. And these changes would prevent the sale of dogs and cats in pet stores. As just recently explained by Scott, a humane model is also a smart model for pet stores. In fact, a handful of Petland stores in the US operate without selling dogs and cats. And two of those stores, one in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and one in Albuquerque, New Mexico, are open and operating even though similar laws were enacted in their locations. Also, in Somerville, South Carolina, a Petland store operated for many years without selling dogs and cats. It is also important to note that there are many businesses in Cobb that are in support of these code changes, so much so that the following 24 businesses graciously agreed to express this by taking a photo. Among these businesses are four successful humane pet stores: Mom &amp; Pups Pet Store Supplies, The Good Dog Company, and Top Dogs Pet Boutique and Natural Foods. These stores have embraced the same humane model that we are hoping Petland will embrace as well. The same model proven to be profitable and community-friendly for other large pet stores like PetSmart and Petco. And here are the business photos that I just mentioned. Thank you for that. And then just a quick comment on another topic. I understand that there is a concern about the term "private breeder." Please note that this term is not included in the section pertaining to the sale of dogs and cats in pet stores. Responsible breeders will not be impacted by ending the sale of dogs and cats in pet stores because responsible breeders already do not sell their puppies to pet stores. And to close, I'd like another quote from Dr. King. He wisely stated, "It may be true that the law cannot change the heart, but it can restrain the heartless." Thank you for your time and consideration this evening, and also I also want to express my support for the recommended code changes pertaining to community cats in Cobb. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Chairman, boys, and commissioners. My name is Peggy McCarthy, and I'm a volunteer with the Georgia Pet Coalition, a statewide network of advocates. I will address the public health risk of campylobacter, a serious intestinal disease that can be transmitted from dogs to humans. The persistent misuse of antibiotics by pet stores and commercial breeding facilities has resulted in strains of campylobacter that are resistant to common antibiotics, which in turn has sparked two nationwide outbreaks in people. Children, the elderly, and those with compromised immunity are the most vulnerable to infection. The CDC tracked the first outbreak of campylobacter linked to pet stores between 2016 and 2018. Nationally, 118 people, including 29 pet store employees, were infected across 18 states and resulted in 24 hospitalizations. 92 of the 118 cases were traced back to contact with puppies from Petland. There were four cases reported in Georgia, including the teenager shown here, who was hospitalized for four days after contracting campylobacter while employed at a Petland in Gwinnett County. It is noteworthy that health officials reviewing records from multiple pet stores found that 95% of the puppies were given antibiotics whether they needed it or not, raising concerns that overuse might have led to drug-resistant strains. A second outbreak is now being tracked by the CDC with 30 reported cases across 13 states and four hospitalizations to date. One case has been identified in Georgia. Laboratory evidence has concluded that contact with puppies, especially those at pet stores, is the likely source of this outbreak and genetically related to the previous outbreak. Thus, the risk of campylobacter for Cobb County employees and consumers remains to-day because one pet store continues to sell puppies that are trucked in from out-of-state and susceptible to zoonotic diseases all along the supply chain. Local governments should have the authority to protect the health of their residents from unsafe business practices that are poorly regulated at the state and federal levels. The commissioners have the opportunity to close this gap and safeguard the health of Cobb residents by enacting the proposed ordinance. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, Chairman, boys, and commissioners. We appreciate the time you've taken this evening to listen to this very long discussion, but a meaningful one, about a humane pet adoption ordinance for Cobb County. My name is Joy Kramer, and I'm a 20-year resident of Smyrna. I'm a consultant for electric transportation and alternative fuels in Georgia, and have also served as the Marketing Director for a large animal rescue group. My work in public policy on issues of importance to our state's economic growth has taught me that the best legislation comes from a joint effort to do good for Georgia businesses and do well for the community. As you can see from this slide, many local governments agree that doing well and doing good go hand in hand. A humane pet acquisition ordinance has passed in 340 localities across the United States, including 11 right here in Georgia. In this next slide, you see Sandy Springs, Canton, Woodstock, Atlanta, Fulton, Cherokee, and many others in Georgia have adopted a humane ordinance and still maintain a thriving industry of pet-centered businesses. During the 2017 and 2018 Georgia legislative sessions, the retail puppy industry hired expensive lobbyists to push for special legislation that would have stripped local governments, including Cobb, of their ability to regulate the sale of cruelly-bred dogs and cats in their communities. In the final days of the session, there were even attempts to amend their language onto other bills, which is a common trick when you know your arguments have no merit or when they are meant to benefit only one business. Conservative Senator Renee Uterman even took to the floor of the Senate well on shiny dye the last day of the session to denounce their last-minute attempt as nothing more than a puppy mill amendment. They will not stop the effort to overturn the will of local governments, but luckily, this is a common ground issue, where Republicans and Democrats can come together to keep pets sourced from this industry out of their local pet stores. Georgia lawmakers have rightfully stood their ground for humane animal treatment by rejecting puppy mill bills and amendments. They stood up for Cobb and other local governments. They stood up for pets and the families who adopt them, and they stood up for the principle that no municipality can afford to place an undue burden on the local taxpayer because of a few bad actors in our business community that seek to profit off of animal and family suffering. When businesses come into Cobb and take advantage of people, when they repeatedly cause harm to animals and pose a risk to public health, when they prove themselves unrepentant and cause society to pick up the tab, when Cobb ends up in the news for all the wrong reasons, we must collectively say that that's not the type of business that adds value to our community. There is a better way. Cobb businesses should do well and do good. It is a winning formula, as other pet stores have already shown. If I can close tonight by quoting some words from our opening prayer tonight, bless our land with honorable industry. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Hi, as you know me, I'm Devin Heath, General Manager at the Embassy Suites Atlanta Galleria, also Chair of Cobb Travel and Tourism. But tonight, I'm coming to speak to you as Chairman of the Cobb Hotel Council. And I just want to say thank you. I'm not going to make this long, but I just want to say thank you in reviewing the Code As you know, we've had some conversations about short-term rentals, and certainly want to share our appreciation and our support behind that code. So, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Rebecca Anding. I've lived in this county since 1976. And I spoke at one of the meetings when you wanted to stop the tethering of pets, which was great. I'm so happy you passed that. It really elevates Cobb County to a better position in the eyes of other people to want to move here, because nobody wants to live next door to somebody chaining a dog. But also, nobody wants to live in a community where it's proven knowledge, these pets are coming from horrific places, and it puts an undue burden on animal shelter in our Animal Services Division because it affords them, the puppy mills, to just sell without any kind of regard. They don't care that they're sick. They don't care that they're not true, full-bred animals. Shelters are taking in, and this is not just Cobb, but many shelters around the county, around the state, rather. You see a population of 20, 25% of the animals in there are purebred animals. So it's not that it's going to stop people from being able to get the animals they want. And you can look on websites, there are many pure breeds, specific breed rescues. I just think that it puts more burden on our shelter. And when animals are adopted from shelters or rescue, they're spayed or neutered. They're not put into the hands of people that can take it home and say, well, I think I'm going to breed this to get my money back. That doesn't happen in, you know, in pet stores. In shelters or rescues, it is state law that the animals be altered before they go into the home. I think that's great. I'd like to see Cobb County be the leader for our area to not have pet stores. They're nasty, they spread disease. People going in there take disease out on their hand, they take germs out, and therefore expose other people. We can do better. Cobb County is one of the best counties in the state, and we can keep it that way by maintaining humane practices. And additionally, I'd like to say that TNR programs are vital to the area, because while most feral cats can't be rehabilitated and made friendly again, they're better off in the place where they've known. When the "our" part of it is taking place, the release, they've already been spayed or neutered, they've been vaccinated, and these cats don't live as long. But they have the chance to live, and they're not hurting anyone. They cut down on, you know, mouse or bugs running around. I just think it's a good thing, so let's please give that some consideration. So, thanks.
Hi, my name's Joe Taylor. I've lived in Cobb County since 1973, and I've lived in my current home for the last 26 years. The main reason why I'm here today is to speak against the TNR, allowing TNR to occur in Cobb County. And I'd like to speak of my personal impacts that I've had to deal with in my home and my property. I have worked alongside wildlife rehabilitators for the last 20 years, and when I come back on February 11th, I'll have a packet for everybody with statistics and science and data. But for the last, the first 23 years of my home, I had the occasion to have three cats show up at my house, two with collars, one without. The two with collars, I was able to find their owners, and the other one, I found a home for. In the last three years, I have been looking at roughly 50 cats coming onto my property, defecating everywhere, killing the wildlife. I've had my own personal birds. I have pet birds. Two of them were killed by a neighbor's cat directly, and by the time I got the cage inside, one other one had passed from stress. And with the three gone, the fourth one essentially grieved so badly that he eventually starved. He wouldn't eat, he starved to death. So I have other birds. I can't even take my own pets outside on my patio on my backyard, because other people's cats have more right to my property than I do or my pets. I had been an avid bird watcher for more than 30 years. I participated in the backyard bird count. I had multiple migratory species that would come. I enjoy bird watching. I have nothing to look at in my backyard anymore. When I walk out in the early morning, there are no bird songs. There's only the traffic sounds from Highway 75. There's only the traffic sounds from Highway 75. As far as the defecation goes, there are times during the summer that you walk in certain parts of my yard, and it literally smells like you've stuck your head in a litter box. When I garden, whether it's my flower garden or my food garden, I prefer to garden without gloves, always have. But now I can't, because I have stuck my hand and grabbed cat poop, I can't tell you how many times, and I have to stop, go inside, and wash my hands. When you want to touch on zoonotic diseases, toxoplasmosis is so prevalent in our environment now that the water runoff into our oceans is now infecting sea mammals. We have spinner dolphins dying, we have monk seals dying from toxoplasmosis, which comes from the parasite T. gondi. The only definitive host for this parasite is the gut of a cat. That has to be a lot of crap, basically, in our environment for the runoff to cause deaths in the ocean.
I'm sorry, ma'am, your time is up.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you for sticking with us tonight. I know it's been a long night. I am not a Cobb County resident. My name is Meredith Blanchard, and I work for the Humane Society of the United States on the Stop Puppy Mills campaign. And I was invited here today by local advocates to lend my expertise to the puppy mill issue, an issue that has significant, special significance in Cobb County due to the presence of a Petland store that routinely makes headlines for the damage it does to members of the Cobb County community. I understand that the Attorney General has issued an opinion on this matter, and while I disagree with that opinion, I realize the effect that it has on your decision for this code amendment. That said, I want to make sure that you fully understand the implications of continuing to allow the sale of puppies in pet stores. Right now, there's a teenager in Florida largely confined to a wheelchair after having contracted Camplibacter as an employee at Petland Sarasota, which is owned by the same individual that owns Petland Kennesaw. For three years in a row, the CDC has issued advisories due to an outbreak of multidrug-resistant Camplibacter that was traced back to pet store puppies. The Petland Kennesaw store was sued by a woman who was hospitalized after allegedly contracting the disease from a puppy she purchased. And at least three additional Georgia residents contracted the serious antibiotic-resistant infection. It's likely only a matter of time before Petland's business model puts more Cobb County residents at serious risk, because as one CDC official put it, quote, "The puppy story is not over. It is difficult to control with a whole system that lacks hygiene at many points and seems to use antibiotics instead." The sale of sick puppies to consumers will also continue. Petland's own claims and warranty company boasted that, quote, "Less than 5% of all puppies that went home incurred any sort of severe medical complication requiring medical hospitalization." This means that nearly one out of every 20 puppies sold by Petland are so sick they require hospitalization, a statistic that does not include puppies treated without needing hospitalization, puppies that died without hospital care, or consumers who did not report their sick puppy to Petland. And of course, there are the animals, who will continue to suffer in puppy mills, in transport to Petland Kennesaw, and the new pet store slated to open in the county, and in store display cases as employees push sales in order to meet a quota. Puppies that wind up dead in the freezer of the store, or shortly after they go home with their new families. The consumers, the community, the animals, these are the victims of a decision to allow the sale of animals for profit. For years, Petland has fought and failed to preempt your legislative power. In the face of multiple failures and growing resentment, I worry that they have wielded political influence over the Attorney General's opinion, a tactic that we saw them employ in Connecticut as well. I ask you, why has Petland spent thousands of dollars on lobbyists to try and preempt your ability to regulate pet stores if preemption already exists in the state of Georgia? Thank you.
My name is Robin Meyer. I'm the Chairman of the Zoning Committee for the Mableton Improvement Coalition, and I want to speak briefly to you about three sections of the code that you're looking at amending. The first is Section 134, 134, exterior building surface maintenance, a new section of the code that we support fully. We also support the suggestion that roof surfaces be added to that section of the code. This will provide code enforcement with an important tool in dealing with properties that are in poor condition but just not quite in poor enough condition to be eligible for your nuisance abatement.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you repeat which code section?
134, 134.
I'm sorry, you said something be added?
Yes.
Roof?
That roofs be added to this. Yes. Thank you. Section, the next section is Section 134, 213, the Neighborhood Retail Commercial District, NRC. The proposal is that the use of a thrift store or secondhand store be added by right to the section rather than as an exception, as a special exception. We oppose this amendment to this section and ask that thrift stores be, continued to be treated in the manner that they are now. The category of thrift store, secondhand store, less, perhaps less pleasantly, junk store is a difficult issue in communities with lots of retail space empty. The rents in these retail spaces are often very, very low. Landlords provide very little service, and consequently, folks move into these spaces, gather all manner of used merchandise in pretty unpleasant and unattractive displays, and again, cause a lot of work for your code enforcement staff. So if there's any way that we can continue to try to manage this, this essentially nuisance in some of our retail areas, we would very much appreciate it, at least here in the NRC district, of which we have quite a few in the Mableton community. We do also have some, across the county, we have some great thrift stores, and I think many people are quite fond of their favorite one. Those folks surely and certainly are not opposed to proper regulation of that industry. And then the last section I'm going to speak on is 134, 289, the Mableton Parkway Veterans' Memorial Highway Design Overlay District. First, thank you so much for your enactment of this ordinance. We're seeing the impact of it on a daily basis in Mableton, as properties are redeveloped without having to be rezoned. These are the same sorts of things that we would come to you and ask for in a zoning case, and now they happen with regular building permitting.
Ma'am, sorry, ma'am, your time's up.
Thank you. That's why this, that section is so important. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners, as well as staff. You know, the time is getting late, and so I'm going to shorten my 15-minute speech into two. My name is Ray Thomas, and I'm the Chair of the HOA Network of the Mableton Improvement Coalition. I'm also the former President of Legacy at the Riverline, and I'm here to speak on Section 134-29091, the proposed short-term rental code. Let me say, first of all, thank you all so much. It's timely. And thank you so much for implementing or proposing this code amendment. We desperately need it, because what is happening now with the advent of home-sharing communities in our area, and quite frankly, right across the country, what is happening is that many communities, residential communities, are now being turned into hotel-like communities. And so, we support this amendment with a couple of conditions. And let me see if I can find those conditions. Here we go. By the way, stick that up here for me. So with the emergence of the online home-sharing economy, many communities are being transformed into hotel-like communities. The problem is, it's now compounding the ability of homeowners' associations to regulate their subdivisions and potentially affecting property values adversely. So we support this new code section with the following recommended changes. The definition of short-term rental agents be expanded to include companies that offer online booking reservations for short-term rentals. We also propose that Paragraph E, which provides for additional information required to obtain a tax certificate, be also expanded to include insurance, and that agents have at least, agents and owners have at least $1 million worth of liability insurance. We also propose that the new code be amended to include the duties of the short-term rental agent to include notifying the HOA, if there is one in place, notifying the HOA whenever renters are admitted, or renters are signed up, so that in the event of emergency, you know, water issues and so on and so forth, the HOAs can be responsive and get in touch with the renter in the event the rental agency is unavailable. And finally, we also recommend that the property, if the property is governed by the HOA, that the HOA be added to the notice.
Sorry, your time's up, and I gave you the full three, not even the two.
That was three, okay. Well, I'm sorry. Give me a penalty for an extra minute. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Carol Brown with Canton Road Neighbors generally want to speak on Chapter 10, Animals. We support the prohibition of sale of cats and dogs in pet stores. However, specifically wanted to address Section 10-13, Control of Animals. A, General Control 1 and 2, it shall be unlawful for the owner of any animal, new language with the exception of cats, to permit animal to be out of his or her immediate control and restraint, or to be left unattended on the premises of the owner. And also, 2, restraint of dogs and/or animals when on the premises of the owner, all animals with the exception of cats, shall be kept indoors or in other primary enclosure. It has not typically been the policy of Cobb Animal Services to pick up domestic cats, and this change of language doesn't adequately promote the health and safety of cats. I think it would be worth considering, Cobb County, to send a clear message to the public about responsible pet ownership, perhaps by adding a statement of purpose and intent to Section 10-11 of the Cobb Animal Ordinance, which would be similar to what we have in zoning code. The statement could include, responsible pet ownership includes having your dog or cat spayed or neutered, microchipped, and vaccinated for rabies, which is required by Georgia law. And if your cat is allowed outside, it should wear a collar with contact information and those required rabies tags. And otherwise, we also support the trap neuter release program for feral cats. The other amendment I'd like to comment on is 134, 291, Short-Term Rentals. We are opposed to this as presented. We do look forward to hearing the revised draft that's going to be presented by the Planning Commission next month. We obviously have seen considerable work going into drafting this new ordinance, but it lacks any restriction on where it may be implemented. We feel like this has the potential to destabilize existing single-family neighborhoods, even the newer ones with restrictive covenants. It will appeal to residential investors who might have previously purchased older homes, renovated them, and put them on the rental market to lease for a year or two. That in itself removes affordable housing from the market. But this new ordinance should make rental property even more lucrative for investors, but it could create more problems for residential neighborhoods and code enforcement. The renters will not be part of the community, and given their short-term visit, are not likely to feel any more connection to the area than if they were renting a suite at a hotel. This scenario is not appropriate in an established neighborhood. We feel like it is more appropriate in Iraq, or near tourism-type events, or near the Sun Trust Truist Park. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, I'm Dr. Michael Good. I've been a veterinarian in Cobb County for 42 years, and I have to admit that my practice, and I've started six clinics in Cobb County, have over 250 employees. And I've done a lot of things that I'm proud of, but the proudest thing I ever did was start a foundation called the Homeless Pets Foundation, which I found homes for over 25,000 dogs and cats, mostly originating from shelters in Atlanta and North Georgia. Some of these dogs and cats, most of them were adopted here. I have a program called the Underhound Railroad. I take dogs up to the north where they have great homes, and I pull them from rural shelters where they have high euthanasia rates. The only problem with the Underhound Railroad, all these dogs and puppies I send up north have to grow up Yankees. Okay? Now, with that said, I have, I'm really proud of where I am right now in my life, and I'm delusional enough to think I can practice for another 42 years, right here in the great state of Cobb County. I mean, county of Cobb County. Apologize. But when I was younger, I made some foolish decisions based on things that really aren't important to me. Right now, what's important to me is my patients and my clients. And my clients are the most amazing people in the world, because they sacrifice so much for their pets. And I'm the poster child. I have seven dogs and two cats, all rescues. I talk to my clients during the day, and we talk about our pets, and they say, "Dr. Good, do you have any pets?" And I say, "Yes, I have seven dogs and two cats." And they know I work 12 hours a day, seven days a week, because I do rescue and veterinary medicine. They look at me, and they say, "How can you do that after being around this all day?" And you know what I tell them? I tell them I'm lucky, because it's the best part of my day, when I go home, these animals that love me unconditionally, and shame on anybody that breaks into my house. And I hope I haven't broken any violations in Cobb County by telling you how many dogs I have. But the most foolish thing, I told you the greatest, my greatest accomplishment, but the thing I'm most ashamed of, I was the medical director for the Petland in Kennesaw for about eight years. I was approached by the founder, the father, and said, "Listen, I don't know anything about veterinary medicine. Everybody says you're a really good vet. So if I sell a dog, I want it to come to you, and if there's anything wrong, you fix it, because I want these people to get what they paid for," which they overpaid. And I did. And this went on for seven or eight years. Then the son took over the practice, over the Petland. And he came to me and said, "Hey, I've been told that you're telling people they bought a sick dog." And I said, "Yeah, that's true, but your dad and I, we made it right. We made it right by them, and you guys paid for everything, rightfully so." I didn't really understand the backdrop of all this.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, your time's run up.
Hi, my name is Sarah Jurgowitz, and I live in Mableton. I was actually asked by Anna from Best Friends to speak on behalf of Community Cats. So I became a community cat caregiver after buying a house in Mableton in the summer of 2018. I immediately noticed outside cats in the neighborhood who did not belong to anyone. I did some research, bought a trap, made appointments with the Community Cat Program of Best Friends, and started getting the neighborhood's cats fixed. My neighbors were grateful for my efforts. Although they had been aware of the cats for years, they did not know about trap neuter return as the best method for population management. I explained to everyone I could about how a group of fixed community cats in a neighborhood will keep a population stable. Our five community cats get two meals a day, heated shelters, monthly flea treatments, and vet care as needed. I have worked to socialize the cats myself, meaning they are willing to be touched by me, but no one else. Obviously, life as an indoor pet is not a practical solution for these cats. Still, I care about them and do whatever I can to improve their lives and keep them safe. In my advocacy, I got together with other women from Cobb County who were doing the same things in their own neighborhoods. We formed a nonprofit and a foster-based kitten rescue called Kudzu Cat Alliance. In a little over one year, with the assistance of Best Friends and Good Muse, we have adopted out over 100 kittens and fixed over 500 community cats. Managing the community cat population in Cobb depends on people taking responsibility in their own neighborhoods. A leash law that includes cats only burdens the people who are doing the work to fix the problem. The five cats I care for every day stop other cats from moving into our neighborhood. If someday someone tries to use a cat If someday someone tries to use a cat leash law to take away our neighborhood's cats, my progress on my street could be undone. New unfixed cats would soon move in, and the cycle would start again. The leash law for cats does not reflect the reality of cats in Cobb County or anywhere in America. Furthermore, the stray holdout of animal control takes up resources that do not need to be used on community cats. Return to field, which means that an obviously outdoor cat is brought back to its territory after being fixed, is considered the best practice. This opens up space and funds for cats that need to be under the care of animal services. Cobb County citizens and some amazing organizations are doing the work to manage the community cat population. We ask that the commissioners work with us so that we can keep making progress. Thank you.
My name's Anthony Smansky. I live close enough to Altoona High School, I can hear their band play in the fall. That's a whole other topic. But I'm also the president of the Society in America for the Conicorso Italiano. I am the president of that club, and I sit on the board of the AKC Club, the Conicorso Association of America. And what I see here is, is what I'm going to qualify as, words matter. So I had someone in the crowd ask me if I was against banning pet store sales, and I am. But I don't think this law is going to be well-written. That's my only concerns. I also want to take in, under words matter, one of the individuals who don't live in Cobb County's exact statement was ban retail sales of puppies. They didn't say retail storefronts. They said retail sales, because in my opinion, that's what some of the people here want, not all of them. But this isn't about rescues and breeders and the such. It shouldn't be a battle. When I see those horrible pictures at what is called a puppy mill, once again, words matter. What does that mean? What does puppy mill mean? What does backyard breeder mean? They're using all of this language that we picture that horrid picture. We see that in our mind, but then I see language in this law that states that anyone that I would sell a puppy to or another breeder, they have to come to my home. I have some handouts for you folks, and they're the handouts of people being robbed at gunpoint. Now me, they can come to my home, I was a cop for a long time, I can handle myself, but I think about if my mother was a breeder or my grandmother, should she be forced to have people come to her home instead of going to a safe place? Words matter. I also want to briefly talk about the leash issues, and it looks like that's in Parks and Rec and this law. We're not taking into consideration training and people training for search and rescue, and those people aren't certified yet. They're practicing, they're training, they're out there. I go over to the Stilesboro Road Park that's opposite of Pittner Dog Park, and they have those huge fields, and we use a 20 and 30-foot lead. That way, we can keep control of the dog, but frankly, for anyone who's been there at 8:00 AM, I'm the only person in those fields. We need to make sure that the words matter. I saw someone talking about agility. I have the number-one dog of my breed in agility in America. Words matter. We used to have a trial in Cobb County, but some of the wording in that law would preclude off-lead competitions. That's really all I have. Thank you.
There have been a lot of impressive speakers, a lot of people with knowledge, great points, everyone from the officer showing up. You guys have a lot of important topics that you're deciding daily, that you have to weigh in, and now we're going to talk about chickens. It's time to let it go. You guys have budgets to deal with, you have police officers to pay, you have millage rates to manage, you have to make sure that puppy mills aren't there, and if somebody wants a safe place, go to their safe places in front of police stations to exchange. But beside that point, talking about chickens, guys, everybody has an opinion. There are people who think these things are pets. I don't. Some of you don't think that chickens are pets. You have the right to your opinion. Can you move forward? I had no idea we were going to be on this puppy mill topic tonight, but again, there are things that we know are wrong, that are happening, that you're not regulating, that you can't regulate. You can't, you know, deal, it's hard to handle hoarding. You guys stop tethering. It happens every day in this county. Let's let code enforcement worry about that, not if someone has four chickens. Some people think the dogs don't belong everywhere. They don't belong in houses, they don't belong in palaces, they don't belong in offices. But you have the right to have your opinion. It's fine. Guys, all the concern and the myth around the whole chicken thing, you know, they're loud, they're dangerous, have them in my HOA, they poop too much, the chicken houses are filthy. Here's the truth, there's no danger from people having four chickens. The danger comes into chicken farms, from chicken farms, where they have, you know, an extra inch, but you're getting that egg, you're all eating chickens, you're all using eggs, you all eat bread. Things that are louder than dogs, dogs, cars, radios, and children. We can't ban those either. If people don't want them in their HOA, restrict it. It's simple, most HOAs have covenants or can get them. The people who want backyard chickens, they just want chickens, they just want a few chickens. So let's have, I actually found this, there is a business in Oregon that picks up poop, and they have this on their website, they have displays of how much poop per animal. So the fear of they're going to be so dirty and so smelly, well, you know, seven cherries. Here's your dog. But I think we can all say we love dogs. I've got 200 pounds of dog, imagine what comes out of that. Cat poop. So your fear that it's so dirty, that this is such a big deal, and you can't possibly imagine somebody choosing to exercise the right on their property? You kind of need to let it go, guys. People who want backyard chickens, they want to have an accessory shed.
I'm sorry, ma'am, you're, as engaging as it is, it's still, your time is up.
I didn't hear you.
You said, you know, good evening, I'm John Barnes, a longtime resident of Cobb County. I'm a realtor of four decades, selling the benefits of Cobb County and the great values and the great management and the great police department. I'm also sort of an original founder of our current animal shelter. I was with John McClure in 1992 when we flew around the countryside in a little experimental plane he built, looking at shelters. And the first thing I wanted to say tonight, is I wanted to commend all of you commissioners and you, Mr. Chairman, for the funds you appropriated to put beautiful new doors and modify and update the shelter, which we're all so proud of, and you all should be proud also. So thank you so much for that. Secondly, if it's appropriate, I would like us to allow the animal control staff in the back of the room to stand up and take a bow for an excellent job that they're doing. It just so happens I was there today and adopted two rescues, so, no, I'm not a veteran. Well, I wish I were, but I'm more than glad to pay for my adoptions. Anyway, I just wanted to thank you for doing that and tell you how good that shelter is and how proud, I'm going to a commemorative program in March for Ms. Jean Wright, where she was nominated and appointed as one of the Great Women of the Year by the State of Georgia. But I wanted to just come here and thank you all for doing that and tell you how great the shelter is and that I was there today and that you're doing a great job keeping our taxes where they are. We are the envy of all the metro counties. But the real reason I'm standing up, and I want the room to hear it, is to set the record straight. I have served on a companion animal advisory committee for over six years with Commissioner Gary Black, the same meeting that Mr. Chris Benson was in. For at least 30 or 40 minutes, Mr. Black read pages of accomplishments that he had done since he's been in there and in the last year or so with companion animal resources to help the state and to eliminate dog fighting, to eliminate what we call the backyard breeders and the puppy mills. If there's any in the state of Georgia, we would like to know about them, or he would, because every animal breeder in Georgia is licensed and they are inspected. Commissioner Black has 13 inspectors and did over 1,000 inspections last year.
Excuse me, sir, your time is up.
I'm sorry, thank you. But I wanted to make sure the room knows we have the finest agricultural commissioner in the Southeast. Thank you so much.
My name's Laverne, I'll keep this brief, and I actually made a friend today, and it was Sonia who spoke about the backyard chickens. So I'm here as one of the people that, I'm a Cobb County resident, and I support the bill, the code change that's going to potentially get rid of the need for the land use permit to have backyard chickens. And I'm a mom, I'm a wife, I'm a local business owner, and I'm one of those people that Sonia talked about of just wanting to have a couple of chickens in the backyard to teach her kids about, just, you know, getting some fresh eggs along with our vegetable garden that we already have. So I just wanted to share my support of that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Grace Hamlin. I'm the founder of Wonder Dogs. I work with kids at risk in downtown Atlanta. I'm really proud to work with Cobb County. We actually, our kids actually build dog houses that go all over Georgia, and Cobb County is one of the counties, we actually don't have a lot of work here. So you guys are doing your job, and you're police officers and animal control are top-notch. I'm here because I'm concerned about the message that we are sending to our kids, so I'm here, like I said, as the voice for the children, because this gentleman that was talking about backyard breeders, and then the other one that said that all breeders are licensed in Georgia, that is so false. I live in a really neighborhood ridden with kids, growing up thinking that breeding dogs brings in money, and a lot of these kids can't even take care of themselves, they're not really taken care of. So I feel that we have to be the voice for these animals, because these kids are growing up conflicted, right? We're sending wrong messages. You know, we're saying that it's okay to breed for profit, and yet, these kids are doing the same thing, but they get in more trouble, and it's not enough trouble, because we're not setting the standard of what we should expect from everybody. So I stand behind the ban of the sale of retail stores and pets, because what we're doing is seen by the children, and they're just trying to survive. So, thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Carlson. I live in Kennesaw, and I do transport for Angels Among Us, but primarily, I do kitten foster. And so I'm here to speak out in favor of trap neuter return. We had a lady speak earlier about an issue with her cats, or with cats in her yard, that had basically overrun her yard, and it's a horrible story, and I understand her frustration, especially about her birds. I happen to love my outdoor birds, I feed them and I watch them, and I concoct little soap operas on the Cardinals versus the Finches. I mean, they're obviously mortal enemies, they hate each other. So I understand her frustration, but it's also a great explanation of why we need a strong trap neuter return policy. Because it wasn't like 50 cats showed up in her yard in one day and decided to move in, it probably started with two or three or four or five who were not fixed. And those two or three or four or five got together and they had a little party, and they made kittens. And then they made more kittens, and then they made even more kittens. And that will continue and continue and continue until you start to find all these kittens who are now cats, breeding cats, and you get them fixed, so they stop the cycle of breeding. The other issue is what happens to these kittens. Many times, these kittens don't live, they're sick, they die, to be blunt, they get eaten by other predators. Sometimes, they're found by well-meaning people, and they're turned into shelters, which is great, if the shelter has somebody available who can foster these kittens, because neonatal kittens, often known as bottle baby kittens, need continuous care, and it is 24 hours. And if they don't have somebody to foster them or a place for them to go, chances are those kittens that have been brought into the shelter sadly will also be euthanized. But let's say they do have someplace to go, and they do have a foster, so they come to my house, and boy, do they ever come to my house. And so I will raise litter after litter of kittens, hopefully who will be healthy enough to go up for adoption. The reality is, not all of these kittens will be healthy. I can't tell you the number of times I have sat on my couch and cried over the body of And I have said, "That's it, I'm done." And then the next day, I go on and say, "Okay, we have to keep going. If I don't do it, who will do it? Who's going to step up?" So, a strong trap neuter return program will stop this cycle of breeding. It will mean fewer kittens are born, fewer kittens are turned into shelters, fewer kittens are handed over to fosters. I get to sleep through the night, which would be absolutely amazing.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I know the hour is late. My name is James Valley. I'm an attorney with Taylor English Decisions. I'm here tonight on behalf of Petland, which I know will make me the most popular person in the room. But I only have three minutes instead of the usual 10, so I want to get right to it. What you've heard tonight is not the story that we believe to be the truth. The owners of Petland are 20-year residents of Cobb County. They've had their business here, they're a family, they care. They do not utilize puppy mills. As you can see there on the slide in front of you, they have, those are pictures of actual breeders, that from which they obtain their puppies. They have a system where they select those, they go onsite and inspect where they acquire the puppies from. It is not anything like any of the other pictures you may have seen today, if those pictures were even taken in this state. We've set forth some material that we've provided to you, and I don't have time to go through everything, but again, pet stores buy dogs from puppy mills, we believe to be a myth. I've already hit on some of the facts why we believe supports that. You can go to www.petlandcares.com. Again, there are approximately 10,000 breeders in the United States, 8,500 are not licensed or inspected by the USDA. Petland purchases their puppies from those which are in fact licensed and inspected by the USDA in addition to the Department of Agriculture in the state of Georgia. But let me get to something more important than that. The Commissioner of the Department of Agriculture, because of some of these local ordinances that have been proposed in the vast majority of jurisdictions in which there are no pet stores, asked for an official opinion from the Attorney General, who's the chief law enforcement official in this state. I'm not going to go through every excerpt, but I can just read you and quote from the opinion, a short statement that sums up why the Attorney General's opinion applies to this proposed ordinance. And I quote, "Neither the Georgia Animal Protection Act nor any..." And I quote, "Neither the Georgia Animal Protection Act nor any other provision of state law allows local governments to impose restrictions." Local governments, not the city canton, local governments to impose restrictions on the sale or disposition of cats and dogs that are stricter than the act. The act allows licensed pet dealers to sell pets. That is why it is legal in the state of Georgia, it is heavily regulated by the state, and the Attorney General has stated that is the law of this state. Attorney General opinions, as we may have already discussed, are considered to be persuasive authority by the appellate courts and are binding, and that is issued, and it applies to this ordinance. We ask you to vote no tonight on Section 10-135, and you can go to the website for the actual story. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other unsaid life or comment, I declare this hearing closed for the first reading of the proposed code amendments. Just to let everybody know that we'll now, the second reading will be on the morning of February 11th. That board meeting starts at nine o'clock. Okay, so that, before we go on to the last part of the media hearing discussions about this code amendments tonight, the board?
Yes.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, first of all, when this ordinance came to us, my first question was, we don't regulate, we don't even regulate our own shelter, the State Department of Agriculture does, for breeders, pet stores, and so forth. A few years ago, when we had the tethering ordinance that was passed, we had folks speaking about Petland then, and we had an attorney that spoke, and I'm not sure if it's the same one of the ones that spoke tonight, but an attorney spoke about a class action suit that they had filed against Petland. And that was three years ago, two or three years ago?
Two thousand seventeen.
When we passed the tethering law ordinance. So I don't know where that is, but it's really a state issue, because it's not under our purview. However, I've heard the stories, and I know that there, there's no bigger lover of animals in this room than me. And the shelter folks can attest to that. Dr. Michael Good, who spoke tonight, is my dog's vet. I have two beagle mixes from the Cobb County Animal Shelter. So it's not that, and I would definitely not support sales from puppy mills. However, this really is a state issue, and the state legislature needs to change the laws to regulate Petland or any other pet stores, and make them more strict, if that's the issue, or if there are any violations. And there, when this was brought forward, there were two commissioners that were in support of this. Now there's not to bring it forward. And because of the opinion from the Attorney General, through the Commissioner of Agriculture's request, I don't see how we can legally or constitutionally consider this for adoption. I think it needs more work or consideration down the road, if it comes back, or if it brings back. But right now, legally and constitutionally, because of that opinion, I can't support moving forward with it. And I know that people have signed up to speak, or it's been advertised, you have every right to come and give us your opinion, and we want to hear from you. You still have that opportunity on February 11th. But I would make a motion tonight to withdraw this for consideration from our code amendments.
And I would second that.
Okay. And I'd like to hear other discussion from the board.
Well, I made it very clear that I think that the appropriate time to handle this issue is at the second hearing. We've heard from everybody, and at that time, it fits right into the process of whether we can approve something, deny something, hold something, continue it, whatever word you want to use. I just think it's too premature to do that tonight, so I would not support this motion.
Okay.
So any other comments?
Yes, I have a question.
Not yet, I just wanted to see the other comments from the Commissioner.
Okay. I recognize the concerns that many of us have on the board with respect to the AG opinion. I've also heard some perspective here tonight that's given me some things to consider. I would like some time to flesh that out a little bit more before voting on that. But I do recognize that the concerns that some of our board members have are quite reasonable, that we don't want to do anything that would contradict what has been said at the state law. So hopefully we'll have some time to digest this a little bit more over the next few weeks. I'm outside of, yes, and I'll talk about the other codes after we finish this motion.
Any other comments? I'll call the question. The motion fails.
God has to break it.
No, I think, I think.
It's gonna come back anyway, February.
The motion fails because you have to have a super.
No.
A simple majority would be fine, but it does fail.
In that case, the motion fails, because we only have two for and two against. So we have Commissioner Gamble and Burl in favor, and Commissioner Cupid and the Chairman in opposition. Okay, so now we have to have public comment for the second part.
Well, just, are we gonna discuss the other codes?
Oh, you're gonna discuss, okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, just generally, just want to thank everyone who came out here tonight and spoke. This has been a long night. Many of you have been quite patient, and also passionate with the issues that you've shared. We do have our work cut out for us between now and the next hearing. The next hearing will be our vote on these amendments. I just encourage you that if you have any opinion that wasn't shared today, to please email us, because the closer that we get to the vote, the less likely that we can really weigh those opinions in full. But just want to thank you again for your time today, and giving me a lot to consider as we move forward with the amendments that have been proposed.
I too would like to thank everyone for their comments and emailing us, and on all the code amendments. I think there are some revisions that we'll be considering based on the comments that we've heard, and there may be even some that we hold to a future date, because they're not ready yet. But thank you all for being here. We hear you, we're listening, and I appreciate all your comments and your patience at this laid out. Thank you.
Whether or not I support or don't support the issue regarding the animal issue, the animal breeding of animals, I have to say that this is the best organized group of proponents I have seen in my three years on the board. You all did your, got it within three minutes. It was very well done. You were the model of how this should be done, so you, you know, used the best use of your time. So again, and the other thing is that I hope to keep those emails coming, because you know I answered every one of them, including the ones that came tonight at six fifty-seven. So that's a true example of democracy in action, and I appreciate all you've done for that. Now, having said that, we still have...
No, Chairman, there's no one that's signed up for more comments.
Really? Okay. Moving on very quickly, Commissioner Burl, you have comments? Any closing comments?
No, I do. So, I first like to say thank you. Thank you to Zaxby's on Sandy Plains for holding a fundraiser for Emily. She's a teen who was recently in a terrible car accident on Jamerson Road in District Three. It was heartwarming to see so many in our community lend their support for this young lady. And Zaxby's donated ten percent, I believe, of their proceeds last week from their sales for her medical, for medical support for her. Also, thank you to the families and friends that attended our Coffee With Your Cop, and our forever friend, Adoption. We had two cats adopted from the Cobb County Animal Shelter. Shannon and staff brought out the trailer, and we had a great event at our newest Ebenezer Downs Park. So thanks to Officer Jig and our animal services team, and our police community affairs team. So that husky, and the pit bulls, and all those dogs in that trailer are ready for adoption at the Cobb County Animal Shelter. So please go take home your new best friend. Congratulations to, uh-oh, sorry. Sunday night, my husband and I attended a benefit for the Animal Shelter and Rescues that was sponsored by Hook, Line &amp; Schooner. Thanks for everyone that came out. And we also had the adoption trailer there as well for adoptions, and they raised over seven thousand dollars that night. We appreciate the generosity, and that of the restaurant owners, and when you dine there, they round up their purchases for additional amount that goes to the Cobb County Animal Shelter. And it's in Smyrna. And then through the Superior Pet for Patriotic Vets Program, we had another veteran adopt this cute pup, Mr. McCarthy. He served five years and seven months in the U.S. Navy. Thank you for giving a forever home to this handsome plot hound. This makes a hundred and thirty-one total adoptions since the program began for our veterans. Thank you. And we appreciate, wait, go back one, we appreciate the generosity and support of Superior Plumbing and the staff at the Cobb County Animal Shelter for making this possible. On February thirteenth, here in the BOC meeting room, at six P.M., six to eight P.M., will be our Technology and Safety Town Hall, that will be hosted by Chief Deputy Stuart Van Huizer and Captain Fisher. And it will be recorded, so if you can't make the meeting on the thirteenth, it's a Thursday night, you can watch it on TV twenty-three, Cobb TV. So, thank you.
Great. I have a question for everybody, and board and staff, I'd like you to participate as well. How many people have eaten a salad this week, or had lettuce?
I can't eat salads anymore.
So my question to the board is, the next time we have a lettuce outbreak of E. coli or Listeria, are we going to ban the sale of lettuce in grocery stores? Just a question. Next, I'd like to announce my town hall for Cobb 911 on Thursday, February twentieth, at the North Cobb Regional Library, which will be from six to eight P.M. Our speaker will be the 911 Emergency Communications Department. Also, special guests will include Cassie Masloom, who will brief us on the understanding sirens and emergency management. Then we will have a second town hall on voting and elections on Thursday, February twenty-seventh, also at the North Cobb Regional Library from six to eight P.M. And the speaker will be the Director of Cobb Elections and Registrations, Janie Evler. And then for highlighting our parks, we're gonna have a spring bike ride with Sergeant Albashy on March seventh. Did I say that wrong? Albashy, thank you. On March seventh, and this will be at the Alatuna Creek Park.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you again for bearing with us just a few announcements. Again, we have the Project Restore 360 event, which will occur at the end of February. We have had a number of people register for that expungement portion of that event, and so it is now closed. However, the job fair portion of that event is open to the public, and we are encouraging anyone who's still interested in record expungement to please still reach out to the contact below, and we can get them registered for the next event. But again, this event will be at the end of February, on the twenty-ninth, from ten a.m. to three thirty P.M. I want to thank everyone that came out to and sent in information to help us determine what resources are available for our homeless people who are outside in very extreme weather conditions. We've had some nights that have been in the twenties, and I dealt with a business that didn't want to put people out in the cold, and we were scrambling, trying to figure out what to do. And I just encourage anyone, if you have knowledge of additional resources than those that are on the screen, to please contact us, so that we can do our best job to make sure that no person has to be outside bearing these type of conditions, recognizing that, you know, homelessness is just a general issue, and the human condition, and having to be outdoors, period. But certainly, we do not want to risk loss of health or life when we have extreme temperatures, like we've experienced over the past couple of weeks. Next, we will have a Spring Arts Festival coming up soon in the Maple House Complex, and that will take place in March. However, vendor applications are due in February on the fourth. And if you'd like more information, you'll see contact information below on the screen, and with the phone number and email. Lastly, there are going to be application workshops for HUD grants, and in District Four, they will be at the locations that are listed on your screen. Thank you, and everyone have a good evening. I hope you get home safely.
Given that, adjourned. Given that, adjourned.